Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Jim Hart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our home.
Thank you, Councilman Hart, for leading us in the pledge. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
President.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Here.
Councilwoman Rukalski.
President.
Councilman Wishart.
Here.
Potem Sampi.
Here.
President.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Okay. We have no special announcements or presentations tonight, so we will move on to citizens' comments on the agenda. So those wishing to speak before the council on the agenda, she'll have three minutes to do so. Questions may be asked and responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from your Weston City Council. I know we have some new faces in the audience who are not regulars here, so just to let you know, this is comment time on agenda items only, and then we will have a separate public comment time at the end of the meeting for three minutes of public comment on any topic you so choose. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Hello, hello, Lori Wilson, Westland. I've just got four questions, and they're all on the consent calendar. Item B, you have a $58,240 not to exceed, but you have a budget of $101,730. Item C, you have $17,540 not to exceed, and you have $45,098 as the budget. On item D, you have $15,796 on a budget of $52,000, leaving excess of $36,204. And on item E, it's $13,710 excess on not to exceed, $34,833. I just want to know, what's going to happen to that $112,699? Is that going into the general fund, or can that be placed somewhere else in the city, like on the south end?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the agenda on my right? Yes, ma'am.
I want to speak to item number nine, the approval of site plan and special land use for proposed nursing and rehabilitation center. My name is Sandra Powers. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Abbeys of Westland, and I'm addressing the city council on behalf of the Abbeys of Westland. As a refresh of who we are, the Abbeys is the condominium complex to the west of the proposed development. The Abbeys has 104 condominiums, a clubhouse housed in 27 buildings, and is a significant tax base for the city. The Abbeys have been in collaboration with Delano Hornbuckle from the city council, as well as Julie Townsend from, if, I'm sorry if I say this wrong, Dr. Senja and Associates, on aspects of this development that I would like to summarize now in order that they be on record and captured in the minutes. I also have an extra copy of this, if one of you would like it. So we presume that if these five agreements are breached, that we've come to agree on, that the Abbeys will have some recourse with the city, because these items are now going to be captured and recorded. All right. One, entrance for this facility will be on Marquette, not on Campus Drive as originally planned, and the facility will have a Marquette address. Two, a second address will be at the north end of Campus Drive that will be gated with a fob or a lockbox entry to be used only for fire trucks in case of a fire. Regular emergency vehicles, such as ambulances, will use the Marquette entrance. Further, the second entrance off of the north end of Campus Drive will have a closed gate, and that will be maintained and kept in, I'm sorry, forever, perpetuity. Construction traffic, three, construction traffic will not use Campus Drive nor drive through the Abbeys community, but a staging facility off of Marquette will be created and used for those construction vehicles and for material delivery. Number four, the building will be offset from Campus Drive by 50 feet and will have significant landscaping and non-direct lighting along Campus Drive. Five, any damage to the stormwater drainage system on the east side of Campus Drive will be repaired and paid for by the owners of the property or the city, but not the Abbeys, since the Abbeys does not own that half of the street. Further, any repairs needed for the concrete itself on that half of Campus Drive will no longer be paid for by the Abbeys of Westland. Thank you for working with us in these regards. We do appreciate being heard, as well as the modifications made on our behalf. One other thing that I would like to state is that some people in our community are adamant that on Campus Drive itself, that the natural perimeter be maintained. We've been told that can't happen, because there's a 50-foot offset.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
However, that's still wanted. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Worm.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, mayor. My name is Christina Worm, and I'm the proud chair of Norwaine Community Citizens Council. Today, I'm here to ask for your help in securing $26,000 in the block grant funds. This isn't just a number, it's the foundation that allows us to keep doing what we do best, building community, one family, one child, and one event at a time. Each year, the council hosts four major events that serve over 1,000 people from our neighborhood and surrounding areas. These events are completely free due to our community partners.
Ms. Worm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is this on the public hearing item?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know I needed to. No one should be excluded. These events are completely free due to our community partners, and because no one should be excluded from celebration, connection, or support, we turn no one away at these events. Our Family Prom brings families together for a Valentine's Day evening filled with dancing, dinner games, and crafts. It's a night where families can dress up, laugh, make memories together. Our Back-to-School Bash provides more than 200 backpacks, filled with supplies, but it's more than just backpacks. It's a full afternoon of fun, food, science experiments, and community resources that help these kids and parents feel cared for. At our Harvest Fest, every child leaves with a pumpkin they've decorated themselves. There's a petting zoo, costume contest, music, and trick-or-treating, turning a simple afternoon into a fall tradition. And our holiday tree lighting. Santa arrives on a fire truck, the tree glows, children sing, and families share hot cocoa and cookies while making holiday memories that they'll cherish forever. These events matter. They create belonging, they lift spirits, and they remind us that joy should never be a privilege. On top of all of this, the citizen council also maintains three community gardens offering fresh produce to those who need it, and we proudly house the largest free library in Westland at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, making literacy accessible and possible for so many. All of this is run by a small, powerful group of volunteers and community partners who simply want to see the Norwaine community thrive. We're not just asking for funds, we're asking for you to invest in community, in togetherness, and in the hope, kind of hope, that builds a stronger Westland. Thank you for believing in us and for helping us continue to make Norwaine a community of choice. I also wanted to speak to consent calendar item B in regards to the Dorsey parking lot. That's coming out of the Norwaine infrastructure monies, and we've asked for our ditches and culverts to be redone. We still don't have quotes or have any idea how much that's going to cost. So where this does need to be done, and I understand this, I just don't think it's a priority at this time until we truly know what's going to happen with our ditches and culverts, so we can reclaim our sidewalks in Norwaine. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Worm.
Yes.
Is there anyone on my right comments on the agenda? Yes, ma'am, with your hand up in the back.
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Gates, and I'm very new at this kind of thing, so bear with me, but I'm here to kind of pick up where Sandy left off with the Abbeys of Westland, because that is where I live also. And I also live in West Michigan. I just came back from that side of the state for a week, just to be sure our house over there wasn't flooded, burned down, or whatever, just for this meeting. And there is a facility in our little town in West Michigan, like it's going to be built by these lovely people. It is built in the middle of a woods, and yes, the buildings are landscaped and they look very nice, but the property is that the building is in, is in the middle of a woods. I brought pictures, and I guess, you know, a day late and a dollar short on that, sorry about that, but I didn't, I just guess I didn't know your, all your rules and what have you. So if they would look at them later, that would be nice, if they wanted, you know, just kind of treat me well and do that a little bit later, that's fine. But that's what I'm here to kind of show them, is what they had done there, and how we can use our woods in a very similar manner to welcome them with their building and their, what they want to do with that area of town. Where our facility is in my little town in West Michigan, they also have medical facilities around, and they have residential around also. So it's, it's all kind of like very, very similar. This is a little smaller, so our barriers would have to be smaller, but anyway. That's what I was here to ask, if I could just kind of present that to this group and just have them take a look at that. So I thank you for your cooperation, and no boos, and no ahs, and no anything else, but thank you so very much, everybody.
Thank you, ma'am, for your comments. Appreciate that. Is there anyone on my left wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Dolores Flowers, and I'm the program manager for the Family Beware Community Center, and I was here to speak on our behalf, to let you know that we're doing a wonderful job with our children in the neighborhood, but we could use more help. We've been in business ever since 2007, doing programs for the children in the spring and in the summer. Six weeks in the summer, one week in the spring when they're off for Easter break. And we take them on trips, educate them as far as what they should be about, as far as being good citizens, introduce them to your police department and to the ferry department, taking them on field trips. All of these things that we're doing for them, and as far as feeding them, their breakfast, lunch, and then they go home at 2:30. The parents, this is a nonprofit for parents that don't have the funds, and we also have to put out a thing, whereas the children, the parents have to fill it out to say what they make in order for the children to be a part of the program. But we've been, we've been doing this now for almost 18 years, at least I have, and I have to say, the young men and women that we have come through that program, that are living in the Westland, Inkster, Romulus area, have done marvelous jobs. They are from nurses to doctors to teachers, ministers they want to be, and going on with their education. And we put it all before them. Persons have volunteered, I even brought one of our volunteers with me today, and she's been a volunteer, plus then she started working with us. She also brought persons in from, even from out of state, that were part of her family. These are educated people that are teaching our children how to be better young men and women, and this is what we are about, and it's being shown. I have booklets to show you, that I could show you all of this, and also to hear from the young men and women that have. We also give them the jobs that they have to have, you know, in the summer, after they turn a certain age, because it goes from five to 13, and when they're 14, they can get a job, and we give them a job for the summer as junior counselors, and also in the spring as a junior counselor until they get out of school. And when some of them have come back, even when they were on our break from college, just to work during that time, or just to stop in and to let the children know that this is, this is, this is good, what they're doing, you know, or just to encourage them more. I just wanted to speak on that, to let you know that we are doing an excellent job and have been, and that we do need some help. Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone on my right wishing, yes, ma'am? And just as a friendly reminder to everybody, if you could reference the agenda item on the business agenda you're speaking towards, that would be helpful, so we can follow along. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Teresa Thomas, and I'm just going to read off of my notes here and make sure I go by three minutes. Norwaine is the community I've lived in for close to 25 years. I've seen neighbors come and go. I was asked upon moving to Norwaine, why did you move to Shakhtow, which I didn't know what that meant at first? I didn't understand what that was and what was happening, so I responded, why not? People make a community, not the area. It was my regret, because of my busy schedule, work schedule, that I could not join the community council, assisting and communicating to officials and leaders the great necessity of the funding for Norwaine. The lack of funding led to the despair of the community. Our community has and is being overlooked for improvements, and yet funding was, is available. Unfortunately, for Norwaine community, funds were, funds were unavailable or not given to Norwaine. Norwaine is known as a historical landmark, but how would anyone know? The landmarks that I've seen in my lifetime are pristine areas within which information, education of its region, origin. Norwaine has been presented in the way funding is so very much, much needed to preserve this community and to truly preserve and enhance, not only for residents, but for all to see and recognize the importance of Norwaine. Areas of improvement, such as the infrastructure, sidewalks, lines, poles, paving of roads, traveled parks, through all of this, Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center hosts annual events for families, such as the NCCC Family Prom, the Back-to-School Bash, Harvest Fest Celebration, and the Holiday Tree Lighting, and to add to that, the annual Rosie Tea fundraising event. In addition, Norwaine Community Citizens Council has three community gardens that provide fresh produce to the Norwaine community. I'd like to end by saying thank you to the city of Westland, our mayor Coleman, and the council for supporting our community throughout the years. The city of Westland understands the needs of our community. Funding is needed to develop Norwaine community into a thriving community of the future. Thank you to you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Annette.
Good evening, council. Mayor. I am going to do new business, number one. Okay, I'm Annette Cutnick with the Norwaine Citizens Council, 1942, I serve on their board. You've heard some of this before. Again, we have four annual events, our Family Prom, our Back-to-School Bash, our Harvest Fest, the Holiday Tree Lighting, as well as our three gardens with public and private gardening plots available. Also during the summer, when we have two camps at the center, Jefferson Barnes says, we teach gardening to the kids, we do crafts with them, we do some nutrition with them, which are all good life skills to have. I believe these events help elevate the community and bring people together, beginning with the Family Prom, to celebrate and promote strong family relationships, you know, because this is parents and their children. The Back-to-School Bash, it's more than a backpack giveaway, which it's a big part of it, but it's a celebration of the return to school with a meal, a math science experiment that's a make and take, and a family movie. The Fall Fest, one of our largest events, is attended by 500 to 700 adults and children from all over the Westland community. It's a true Fall Fest event with pumpkins, crafts, petting zoo pony rides, trick-or-treating, a costume contest, and a DJ. To end the year is the Holiday Tree Lighting, complete with Santa, cocoa, and cookies, Christmas stockings, and holiday crafts. All of this is made possible through the many partnerships we have formed, such as with Wayne Metro, the National Kidney Foundation, Journey Church of Westland, Wayne Ford Civic League, Westland Rotary, Westland Methodist Church, Friends of the Rouge, and many others and volunteers, and without their support, we could not do this. It takes a lot of community participation to put on these events and support our gardens, and it also takes a lot of funding. I believe all these events are worthwhile and add pride and community to the area. Little did we realize when we began how much this would grow. We thank you for your consideration and supporting the Citizens Council in its mission to help create a welcoming family neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Annette. Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Joyce Henry, speaking to Agenda Nine. I'm a resident of the Abbeys of Westland, and I'm here to speak on denying this project. I hope you all saw on YouTube the passion of our residents who attended and spoke at the planning meetings, mainly about traffic issues, trees and wildlife habitat removal, and disruption to our quiet, serene community. The petitioner stated he chose Westland to expand their markets based on the need of the community. There already are five nursing homes in the city, and within, oh, and with 25 within nine-mile radius of Westland Center, according to AI. I ask, do we really need another? The civil engineer informed us as special experts would be on site to oversee construction due to the close proximity of a petroleum gas pipeline running underground. Some of it was encased and some not. What if the worst happens here and the pipeline is punctured, causing a leak, or worse, an explosion, huge safety concern for nearby residents? Human error happens. Another thought, once trees start tumbling, what if the scared, disoriented deer start sprinting onto Wayne Road, causing car crashes and getting hit and killed, or worse, injured and in pain? My taxes just went up $2,345, and a day now total of $6322, and if you multiply that as an average by 104 units in the Abbeys, Abbeys, I dare say we residents contribute generously to our local government. Will this project negatively affect our property values? Lastly, huge kudos to Councilwoman Melissa Sampi, who posted her opposition to this project on the community news Facebook page. She listened to our comments, and many, many other residents posted their disapproval of the city destroying more trees and the wildlife habitat, which now includes wild turkey, especially with the available vacant lots and buildings that could be used for this facility and our presently city blight. I know I stated a few what-ifs, but I think them reasonable. Please take our concerns to heart and side with the city residents. Please save our woods and don't approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone on my left wishing to speak on the agenda? Yes, Mr. Worm.
Good evening, council, in the mayor's office. Item one on the new business. Well, the federal government has declared the Norwaine area and the Carver subdivision as priority target areas for federal funds. But historically, not a lot of those federal funds have gone into these two communities. And it seems that there's some attempt to keep these communities in a state of marginalization. When we talk to contractors or city planners, they identify the two communities as being marginal, right on the edge and near the edge of coming into inclusion in regards to the city of Westland. And we have the two groups, the Norwaine Citizens Council and Southeast Westland Home Under Association, also with Yosemite Church, and the Christ Temple Church Summer Programs. And these programs are to try to break that grip of marginalization within those communities. And for some reason, there have been a lot of roadblocks in regards to these federal funds to help these two communities out, and particularly with this question of matching funds. Now, you're asking poor people, the federal government said they need the money, to come up with matching funds for their programs, but yet when the city produces a program, they go right to their bank and provide the funds for their projects. And what I would ask for you to do, because I'm going to probably ask you twice, one, to repeal that matching funds thing, make it, put it concretely, so it cannot be used again against marginal communities. You're going to ask a person who needs soup to bring their own soup before they can get soup, and that's wrong. That's terribly wrong. It's discriminatory. As a matter of fact, it's discriminatory. And what I want, and what it also does is disempower those two communities, disempowers them. The only way that it can be empowered is through with these federal funds, because I know the city doesn't have any funds to empower. And city funds, what we've been experiencing with community block grant funds is that the city decides that it wants to buy carpet over helping the children out in the project on the Community News Facebook page. She listened to our comments, and many, many other residents posted their disapproval of the city destroying more trees and the wildlife habitat, which now includes wild turkey, especially with the available vacant lots and buildings that could be used for this facility and our presently city blight. I know I stated a few what-ifs, but I think them reasonable. Please take our concerns to heart and side with the city residents. Please save our woods and don't approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone on my left wishing to speak on the agenda? Yes, Mr. Warren.
Good evening, Council, in the Mayor's office. Item one on the new business. Well, the federal government has declared the Norwaine area and the Carver subdivision as priority target areas for federal funds. But historically, not a lot of those federal funds have gone into these two communities. And it seems that there's some attempt to keep these communities in a state of marginalization. When we talk to contractors or city planners, they identify the two communities as being marginal, right on the edge and near the edge of coming into inclusion in regards to the City of Westland. And we have the two groups, the Norwaine Citizens Council and Southeast Westland Home Underassociates, also the Yosemite Church, and the Christ Temple Church Summer Programs. And these programs are to try to break that grip of marginalization within those communities. And for some reason, there have been a lot of roadblocks in regards to these federal funds to help these two communities out, and particularly with this question of matching funds. Now, you're asking poor people, the federal government said they need the money, to come up with matching funds for their programs. But yet, when the city produces a program, they go right to their bank and provide the funds for their projects. And what I would ask for you to do, because I'm going to probably ask you twice, one, to repeal that matching funds thing, make it, put it concretely, so it cannot be used again against marginal communities. You're going to ask a person who needs soup to bring their own soup before they can get soup? And that's wrong. That's terribly wrong. It's discriminatory. As a matter of fact, it's discriminatory. And what I want, and what it also does, is disempower those two communities. Disempowers them. The only way that it can be empowered is through with these federal funds, because I know the city doesn't have any funds to empower. And city funds, what we've been experiencing with community block grant funds is that the city decides that it wants to buy carpet over helping the children out in these communities. And that's wrong. And that's definitely wrong. So what I'm asking you to think about as we go and move through these public comments is that you have a choice to help these two communities and their programs to become more included in city activities and empowerment, or you can take the other road.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Your time is up.
Time is never up. Let's just be clear. That's for the rest of the citizens. Your time is never up.
Thank you, Mr. Warren, for your comments. Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak on the agenda? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Eleanor Ford, and I'm a resident of, a long-term resident of Westland since 1951. I have been asked since my retirement to work with the Samuel Beware Summer Camp directed by Delores Flowers, and she asked me to come and share some of my expertise, and I've done that for the last 10 years, 10 or 11 years. And I find that many of the things that I was taught in the home is not being taught in the home any longer. Common things like place settings, the appropriate language to use, the appropriate attire to wear to different occasions, the appropriate, many appropriate things. And what I have done is in talking to the children, and I asked them, how do you sit down and have family time? Do you do it at the dinner table or when? And I discovered that many of them do not sit at, that's not a formal thing anymore, you don't sit at the dinner table together. But I took my china and silver and showed them how to set a table, and I was so stunned that the boys were more excited about doing it and learned to do it very well than the girls. But the boys really like setting the table, and they express. And I had parents to come back to visit. When they would come to pick them up, they came in to ask who I was, because the children now want to set the table at home and sit down to a dinner meal together. So the program is worthy. It's very, very worthy, I believe, and I feel. Yes, I'm an old lady, but I retired after 41 years of service to the University of Michigan, and if I can spend my time helping Delores Flowers enhance our young people so that they can become good citizens and well-rounded citizens of the city, the state, and this country. Thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Comments on the agenda? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say, my name's Tony, and I'm talking about Agenda One real quick and Agenda Eight, they kind of go together, as he was talking about Norwaine. We can throw money at something, but if we don't help the people too also, and that's what Agenda Eight's about. Agenda Eight is, we have, we've come as a team to come together to help that community, not only as somebody that has lived nearby that community, grew up in that community, and actually was a part of the poison of that community at one time. I don't need to go into my war story of my life, but it was a bad life. I ruined the city, I would say, at one point. But through the people that I have on my team now, that were gang members, drug dealers, that have been saved, that have changed their life around, we are going back into that community and letting them know that there's hope and they're able to have change. And with, we can throw money at anything, but money don't change if we don't got people in there to help the people know that there's hope and there's change. So that's what my team is going to do. That's what we've been doing for eight, up to 10 years. We throw, we throw four revivals a year where we give out bounce houses, food to the community. We love on them, and we're just here to continue to plant, stay planted in this city to let them know that there's hope and a way out, something that was never given to me when I was out there doing my thing in the city. But I'm going to come back here and make sure that I do that. So I just wanted to share that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the agenda? Anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close comments on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Are there any changes to the consent calendar?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Council President. Sorry for my raspy voice. I think the allergies got to me. I am looking to move Consent Calendar Item D to New Business for discussion.
Okay, there's a motion to move Consent Calendar Item D to discussion by Pro Tem Sampi. Is there support? There's support by Councilwoman Baumann. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Move Item D to New Business, 1A. Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rukowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampi.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the consent calendar? Any other changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes as amended.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the budget study session held April 12, 2025. Approval of bid to remove and replace parking lot at the Dorsey Center. Administration recommended the low bidder TBD Construction. Total amount not to exceed $58,240. Approval of bid to remove and replace the dumpster enclosure at Jefferson Barnes. Administration recommended the low bidder Olson Cement Work Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $17,540. Last item approved on the consent calendar today. Approval of bid to replace the fire alarm system at the senior center. Administration recommended the low bidder Summit Fire Protection in an amount not to exceed $34,833. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilwoman Rukowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
Move to New Business, Item One. Public hearing for the 2025-2026 Community Development Block Grant Home Annual Plan. This public hearing date was set March 17, 2025.
And before we begin the public hearing, we will have a presentation from Director Joanne Campbell, who is our Community Development Director here in the City of Westland. Director Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. The City of Westland receives Community Development Block Grant and Home Partnership Program Funds from the federal government. HUD regulations require the city to receive citizen input on the use of these funds. This is called the annual planning process and includes a public hearing before the Westland City Council. The city currently anticipates an estimated grant allocation for the 2025-2026 fiscal year of CDBG funds of $1,013,72 and of home partnership funds of $286,930. However, as most people are aware, we have no idea what our grant will be as the federal budget was passed, but the allocations have not come down to any of the communities. So we have to estimate the budget that we're looking at on the current fiscal year's budget. City Council will approve the CDBG and home projects and budgets at the first meeting in May on May 5. The city will then submit its application to HUD for approval. And just for everyone to share more about the program, proposed projects in the administration's proposed budget include program administration, homeowner rehabilitation, first-time homebuyer down payment assistance, affordable housing development, public services, homeless services, neighborhood services, Friendship Center and Jefferson Barnes Community Center improvements, Norwaine infrastructure and park improvements, and historic preservation. The city historically uses the CDBG and home funds for these types of projects because they meet the needs of the city's qualifying populations. And what that means is all of the federal funds have to be spent on what Congress has determined qualifying populations, and that is low-to-moderate-income families and neighborhoods, senior citizens, disadvantaged youth, and homeless families. I do want to answer one of the questions that was brought up during the questions on the agenda in regard to the projects that were in the consent calendar, including the one that was moved to the New Business. An excellent question. When we submit information to City Council, when we bid out a project and we submit the information to City Council about the amount of the project and also the funds that are allocated for the project for the Community Development Block Grant Funds, we put the amount of the project, but also how much of those funds for that type of project City Council has approved. So in this current fiscal year, Ms. Wilson provided those dollar amounts, which I cannot repeat as well as she did without my computer. And so what that means is we have additional funds for Norwaine infrastructure. We, the city has additional funds for Jefferson Barnes improvements. The city has additional funds for Norwaine parks and also for projects of development and improvement at the Friendship Center. Those projects, those other projects haven't been determined yet. We haven't bid out. We have some ideas, but nothing has been decided and set in stone until City Council approves those projects as we bring them forward. The question of whether or not these funds can be put into the general fund, the answer to that is no, because these are Community Development Block Grant Funds, which are distinct and separate from general funds. So we cannot put the unused funds of those line items into the general fund. The City Council can approve changes to the Community Development Budget, which they do once or twice during a fiscal year, and you did recently, and if there is a new project, a new idea that comes forward. But at this point, without those changes approved by City Council, we would move forward with other projects, as Christina suggested, the culverts in the Norwaine subdivision. So I just wanted to answer, that was an excellent question and easily confusing to folks. The city can also use its funds, its Community Development Block Grant Funds, for a category called Public Services, and these are the services that help the people. Most of the other services are called bricks and mortars, like doing infrastructure repairs, repairing a community center, those sorts of things. But public services are services for seniors, for disadvantaged youth, for homeless people. And the HUD regulations allow cities to use a portion of the Community Development Block Grant Funds for this purpose. This year, in the annual planning process, nine groups applied for Community Development Block Grant funding for public services. The total of those grant requests exceed the city's maximum by $53,000. So this year, a very difficult decision has to be made about how we can allocate those funds, because we are limited, the city is limited, on the amount that can be used for public services. The city administration and its proposed recommendation supports all of these nonprofit organizations and recommends funding for all nine of the applicants. The funding recommendations are based on the number of people served by each applicant. For example, the Friendship Center serves thousands of people. The Norwaine Community Citizens Council serves well into the hundreds of people. I think Annette mentioned 700 people alone come to one event. And the Summer Camp Program serve 20 to 40 children who are able to attend those camps. Therefore, the recommendations are based on the number of people served. The Westland CDBG funds, I do want to share, historically have not been used for overnight field trips, but certainly are used for local field trips. The City Council, or I'm sorry, the administration will also recommend that City Council remove the one-for-one match requirement for public services, although all applicants did provide information that they meet that one-for-one requirement, because it can be something like, you know, the food that is donated for lunch is part of that, volunteer time of folks who come to camp or different events. So it's not dollar for dollar. It can be measured in many ways. But regardless of that, the city, the administration will recommend to City Council to remove that program requirement, and this will be included in the funding resolution presented at the May 5 meeting. Community policing, neighborhood services, and the Friendship Center all reflect eligible uses of Community Development Funds. The administration funding recommendation includes retaining funding levels for these city departments. The services they provide meet federal regulations when provided in eligible census tracts and for qualifying populations. By allocating this funding specifically for the eligible census tracts, it dedicates services specifically to these areas. This means that neighborhood services staff are dedicated to these areas. Community police officers allocate a portion of their time to these areas, and the city better meets the needs of senior citizens. That is a brief overview of the Community Development and Home Partnership Programs. They're very complex. Everything that the city does in managing these programs is in accordance with federal regulations. The city can, the City Council does make the approval of the budget, but there is not a single project that we manage that does not meet the federal requirements. And so I just wanted to share this brief overview, and if anybody has any additional questions about the program, feel free to call me. If you go on the website, go to Housing and Community Development, and I'd be more than happy to meet with you, talk with you, and email you information about the programs.
Okay. Thank you, Director Campbell. So this is a public hearing, and at the public hearing, speakers will have three minutes to speak on this agenda item only, the CDBG Home Plan for this fiscal year. And you will have the opportunity, again, three minutes to speak on the CDBG Home Plan. Is there anyone wishing to speak on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Through the chair, Ms. Campbell. Why is all the funding, this $112,699 that's left over from what's allocated up here at the top going into your community block grant? Why is it all going to Norwaine and no place else? Carver Sub is a target area also.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak? Public hearing. Anyone on my left wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Warren.
I didn't realize that there was a separate commentary thing for that, so didn't mean to take the double time.
No worries.
Gave me another opportunity. So the Norwaine infrastructure is in trouble. I mean, we're in trouble. We're, if you drive through our neighborhood, go through different seasons, look at where the infrastructure problems are. Look at where things are failing. We have landlords that we're competing against. We have the police coming to our neighborhood, but it's, it's not proactive, it's reactive. You know, we talk about the community police coming. Again, it's children's programs. It's not helping with adults who are in need. It's not developing relationships with adults. I personally am watching the folks who stay at the lighthouse, when they get kicked out in the morning, coming and staying under a pavilion, and then there was no restroom for them. So they're using the restroom, they're defecating and urinating in the field there in the open where there's children and people living there. I took the time to reach out to Parks and Rec and go, hey, can we get that porta potty that we get every year? Can we get a little early this year? Because these folks have nowhere to go. You know, so it's just, it's a matter of, we, we need the funding. The Norwaine Citizens Council is building the community. That's, like I said, $26,000 is a drop in the bucket, because we are doing four community events, three community gardens, running a library. We're trying to do as much outreach and uplifting of people as we can. You go with your mom and dad to go get a backpack, because they can't afford you school supplies, but that's not what you're going to remember from that day. You're going to remember from that day that you had fun creating memories with your mom and dad that day, and hey, guess what? We were shucking along a backpack at the same time. You know, this isn't what you're taking away from this. We're helping the underserved. We're helping the community. And we need the infrastructure money. Like I said, the Dorsey parking lot? Yeah, it's great. It needs to get done, but we need this, we need our ditches and culverts done. And we still don't know how much this is going to cost. We still don't know what it's going to take. And it's been over a year. But we know, and I've been asking for this for years, and nobody's taken a look at it. Nobody has an estimation on what it's going to cost. So now here's $50,000 out of the budget that we have no idea what it's going to cost to replace these things. So it's just very disappointing, but I appreciate support in Norwaine and getting our infrastructure needs taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the public?
Since my retirement, as I said, I've been working with Dolores Flowers. And I see the benefit of what I've been able to share and what she's been able to share with the children of the community. Many things are not being taught in their home any longer. And I also do a segment, it's not all fun and games. I do a segment with the older children, and I plant a seed in the younger children to be college-bound. And the older children, I have helped, some of them have come back and said, Ms. Ford, the things that you taught us, in day camp, I utilized it. I've used it to fill out my application and in my interviews to be accepted at various universities and college. So we're trying to prepare the children to embrace life and to embrace it abundantly. And we just need funds to do it. I volunteer a lot of my resources and equipment from my home to even share with them, like the place settings. I bring my own china and stuff over for them to learn how to use it. And then for them to go out on their first interviews and say, you were right. We had a luncheon interview, and I knew what to do with those forks. And one young lady told me that the people that she interviewed with seemed to be surprised that she knew what to do with all of the silverware. So it's, we think it might be a small thing, but it is a big thing for them to be able to learn and to take it into life and to use it for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Yes, it's time.
You know, it was asked that about the money that's going towards Norwaine. Norwaine has a community of lower income. I mean, these kids and the people that live in that neighborhood, I think, would be much better if the area was clean, like the city or other neighborhoods, if the trash was picked up, if ordinance came through and gave out tickets for people that are parking, that have old cars that have been parked on the street for years without current license plates. I mean, for ordinance to go through, make people clean up their yard. What about the landlords that are absent? I mean, these are things that main cities don't have to deal with. Norwaine is an old city. It's supposed to be a landmark, but I could, a landmark of what? Our kids are without everything. Not just the small pieces of paper or pencils or ink pens, and excuse me for being excited, but they're, our kids are without a lot. And what is it that we have to really kind of practically just get on our knees and pray and ask you guys to help us? I mean, if the funding is available for our community, it belongs in our community. Let us have it. Let us upgrade and uplift our community so that the people that live in this community can uplift themselves. I was lucky, because I came from a family that gave us all of the morals and strength of working class people that had to work for what they wanted. And you get what you want by working for it. But if these kids see, all they see is despair, drugs, drunken parents, what do you think they're going to turn out to be? Why is it that our kids in our community have to live in an area where they're scared to walk the streets? Our little, what you call a park, there's nobody there, because you got two swings for a baby. You got four swings for the kids. I mean, there's no picnic tables. There's no, no, there's no kids walking around there, because they don't have any place to sit out. I mean, it's a lot of things that are going on within our community. I lived there. So you can go around, and people can go around and ride around us and say little negative things, but what is it? If we can get the help and get the assistance that we need to provide for our families, for our children, to make it a better life for them, if they see better, they'll be better.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the public hearing? Yes, Mr. Worm.
Okay. I've been affiliated with the community development over 10 years. And I know for a fact that over those 10 years, that at least $100,000 a year has been given to the neighborhood services. That's over $1 million. And nothing has been approved. And that's why the argument comes from the two communities, that you're providing these funds, and nothing has changed over those 10 years, and a million dollars have been put in that project. Police, community police, over $1 million has been put into that over the last 10 years. And the same complaint is here. When do we see them? So that money is just going to waste. And that's why a lot of us on that commission says, we'll gladly pay for it if you do the job. But the pressure's on us to give the money anyway, and we get no results for it. So to wrap this up is that these communities have come together with their own programs, because the city doesn't have a program for marginal individuals. That's why these groups have come together. If the city was providing anything, these groups would not be necessary. Homeowners groups, other groups, they would not be necessary, because they come to you as council, and they come to the administration with their concerns, and the money goes elsewhere. And using other excuses like it's public services. Now, in regards to the Friendship Center, I don't know who provides help for their faculties, but it's mainly coming from the community development. Anything that's needed over there is coming from community development. I thought the city had a budget to fix their buildings. If they doesn't have the budget, then they need to say so. And then we can send the money over there. But the money automatically goes over there in the name of public services. And so what I'm asking council to do is you look at it. Because, as you know, last year, when we came with these same complaints, council did not take it up, the administration didn't take it up, and they just went on, bought their way, spent the money as they pleased, and not adhered to any of the community's recommendations. And tomorrow, we will be making recommendations. I don't know how it's going to go, because it has to go by a vote. But the bottom line is this. These are just recommendations. They don't have to be accepted by the administration or council. But if they're not, I certainly like to have a reason why, I certainly like to have a reason why that you would deny these reasonable recommendations for the community. Because we're not asking for $1 million. These three entities are less than $100,000 out of a million. Less than $100,000. That's all they're asking for, is what they need. There's no overpayment or anything. This is exactly what they need in their budgets to carry out.
Thank you, Mr. Worm.
Well, I'll be back.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on the public hearing? Anyone else in the audience?
Motion to close public hearing.
There's a motion to close public hearing. Is there support? There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Baum. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baum. Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wisher?
Yes.
Pro Tem Zampi?
Yes.
President McNamara?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business. Item 1A, formerly known as D. Approval of bid to install approximately 19 trees and 36 boulders at public park 2301 South Wildwood. Administration recommends the low bidder Frank's Landscaping and Supplies LLC in a total amount not to exceed $15,796.
Is there a motion? Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Pro Tem Zampi, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there discussion from the maker? Yes, Pro Tem.
Thank you. I actually moved this in specific reason that the last meeting, we had talked about park improvements. One of the things that I had mentioned to the administration is that I wasn't excited just because they stated that there was traffic and people running through the park, that we just put up boulders. That's not something that I feel is appeasing, or necessarily is it fair just to come into a park and say, well, there's activity there, we're just going to put up some boulders. That's not appeasing to me. And frankly, if I lived by that park, I'd be pretty upset myself. So based on what had been shared, is that 36 boulders, I'd asked the administration before it got put on the calendar, can we take a look at this, possibly cut down the number of boulders to have some appeasing landscaping, some trees. We do have 19 trees currently slated, but at this point right now, I just don't feel like that's fair, nor is that something that I support. So I'm hoping that we can postpone this, take a look at the proposal, and possibly come up with something that is attractive, rather than just throwing up boulders in a park. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. I do feel like it's fair to make sure our parks are appeasing, and I don't support this current bid currently. So I definitely would love to make a motion after this is closed, to make a motion postponing.
You're making a motion now? Are you going to wait until discussion?
No, I can wait for discussion.
Okay. Is there any discussion from supporter?
No, it's time.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion?
Yes, I have mine.
Yes. Okay. Councilwoman Rakowski and I'll get to you, Councilwoman.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. Just for clarity's sake, he has a little control panel there, and sometimes it's hard to see which one of us have asked to speak. I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Zampi, purely for the fact that the new park that's being constructed, I can't count how many public hearings or study sessions or renderings have been presented to show this new invigorated downtown area and all this, you know, wonder and splendor. And then it comes to another park, and it's just like, well, they just need some trees and boulders. Fair. But at the same time, everybody wants to have an opportunity to provide input into their parks. And we've allowed all sorts of input for this park over here, and now this is, yes, it's a previously existing park. But nonetheless, it should have the input of the folks who are stakeholders in that area to kind of add to the aesthetic of that, so that it is appealing. So I agree. You know, yes, you don't want cars going through your park. Yes, you don't want, you know, I guess, to me, it's like, kids do run in parks, but the cars are a problem. But there's a lot of parks in the whole community. I'll bring up another one up in the north end of town at Carrato Park. When the city took out all of the fencing, they left holes every 10 feet from the wooden fencing, and if you tried to leave your car to go run in the field, good luck not twisting your ankle. And that had been brought up last year, and it's been brought up multiple times, and that was never recovered. So if we're going to be talking about rehabilitating our parks, and we have made huge investments in adding placecapes and mulch and drainage, I think this deserves the same conversation as all the other improvements.
Councilwoman Baum, did you have something to add?
I was encouraging her to make the motion. Get it to that, not getting that out there to talk about that first.
Mayor, did you want to just?
Please. Yeah, our community development director, Joanne Campbell, wanted to talk about the purpose of this item, if she could. Thank you.
Director Campbell.
Yes, thank you through the Council President, and thank you, Mayor Coleman. I just want to share that Christina Worm and I, as Christina shared, she's the president of the, or chairperson of the Norwaine Community Citizens Council. Christina and I met with Kyle Mulligan, the Parks and Recreation Director. We identified public park, because it is getting a new place structure with the American Rescue Plan funds. And we discussed that this, in addition, the extra funds will be used for a walking path. And so this, we did get public input. With Christina, we met to discuss what would be the best thing for that park. The residents who live on the courts that go to the park, they're not complaining that they can't drive, that they won't be able to drive through the park any longer, rather than driving out to, you know, properly on the streets. They're thankful that the boulders and trees will be planted that will prevent people from using their park that is right next to their homes as a driveway to exit to Wildwood. So this has been discussed publicly, certainly not to the extent of some of the other parks, but absolutely, we did not move forward without comment, without getting input from Kyle Mulligan. And the, and we also agreed that the walking path would be a good improvement. So this park will be getting a new place structure. The boulders and tree, the trees will provide shade, as well as, you know, not allowing people to drive out to Wildwood. The new boulders that have been placed along Vinoy Dorsey Park by Wayne County Parks across the street from the Jefferson Burns Community Center are beautiful, and they also serve the purpose of the four-wheelers not driving and using Vinoy Dorsey Park as their, like, four-wheeler place to drive. So we see benefits from the boulders, we see benefits from the trees, and we have had public input in moving forward to request the proposals from contractors for this.
Councilman Hart?
Thank you, Council President. I didn't think it happened that fast. Thank you, Joanne, and thank you for letting me know that Christine Worm was actually involved. So sometimes you hear some additional information, and it changes your opinion. So this is one of those moments. I'm satisfied. If, knowing that Director Campbell talked to Christine Worm, Christine Worm is one of the chief, I would say, stakeholders in that area, and I think she speaks for the community, and if this is something they talked about and something that they want, it's like a no-brainer to me. So it'll kind of get hard for me to move off of that right now, so I'll be supportive of it. Thank you, Christina, and thank you, Joanne.
Any other discussion? Is that?
So I just want to make a point, too. I know I talked to Director Campbell about this, and there has been an issue at public parks of people that are just driving across the grass and treating it like it's their own personal parking lot, or, you know, cut through to just drive and park on there and do whatever at the park. And I know that's been an issue, and that's one of the things that we're trying to prevent with the boulders and the trees, you know, ultimately going in to cut out that access so people don't just treat it like a driveway for their own personal vehicle. And I know this was something that I believe we talked about at the Norwaine Citizens Council meeting this last time as well. So we did have some deliberation amongst membership of the Citizens Council as well. So this was brought up at the last April edition of the Citizens Council meeting, too, as well.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Director Campbell, for adding the information about Ms. Worm and having the hearings. However, what my feeling is, is every other park has been brought to council and has been given the attention and care and details that some of the residents this evening have spoken about, wanting to have equity, wanting to have the same amount of attention given to where they live, the same amount of investment to where they live. And while I understand this is all CDBG money, you know, there still happens to be some ARPA dollars floating around. So there still are some potentials for some of these public places and spaces and communities, both at the south end of town in Norwaine and all between, to be receiving some of the things that they so desperately need to make their communities feel more vibrant and to do some more placemaking. I believe one person spoke about the fact that there's no benches, right? So where's, if we have a walking path, where are the benches? If we're going, yeah, nobody wants the cars, I agree. But can we add, can we and the administration add to what is being asked to be done, to make it an even better opportunity for public park to be even better? And I think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's the same thing that Councilwoman Zampi is asking as well.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Hornbuckle?
Yeah, I just want some clarifying questions here. So sorry, Joanne, I didn't get to you earlier. But our last meeting, I think it was in May, we talked about 10 grand moving to, from the, using the CBG money, 10 grand to this park. There's $15,000 here. Where's this other five? Is that also part of the CBG? Okay. For me, right now, I'm going to have to go with my Kylie here and just say, hold off on this, because we did- the, using the CBG money, ten grand to this park. There's fifteen thousand here. Where's this other five? Is that also part of the CBG? Okay. For me, right now, I'm gonna have to go with my Kylie here and just say, hold off on this, because we did, purpose that we, our vision with the ARPA money was to fix all our parks. And I prefer to keep this money back in the community and let the community handle their projects and use the ARPA money to help with our parks. And I would like to get with Kyle to understand where we at, because we supposed to have been doing a lot of things at all the parks, and I'd rather use the ARPA money for what it was kinda intended for and put the CBG money back into our community programs. So.
Okay. Pro Tem Sampe.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanne, for just summarizing this. I have spoken to people in that area that weren't excited about the boulders. So, for me, like, I like looking at the larger picture to figure out how can we improve the park, not just the boulders, but also in addition to other projects. So, I would love to kinda sit down, take a step back, and really plan it out rather than just putting up boulders just for a temporary fix of driving through a neighborhood or driving through a park. I mean, I support the improvement. I think it's well-deserved, and I think that it's really important that we're thinking about long-term for a public park rather than just putting up some trees and boulders and just saying that we're gonna create a walking path. So, I think that there's a lot of potential here. So, for me, I just would like to take a step back, postpone this item, and then from there, what we'll do is we'll take a look to see what we can do in a larger scheme for improvements for public park. I also agree, if we can keep the money for programming rather than park improvements, because we do have the ARPA dollars that, you know, we have not expended, there's quite a bit left. So, that's kinda where my mindset is. I don't know if, I think all the comments are made, so I'd like to make a motion to postpone. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Then I'll wait.
Councilwoman Bowman, and I'll get to Councilwoman Hart.
Through the chair, to Joanne, two questions, I guess. One, is there a visual of how this is going to look like once, like, usually, I'm sorry, there's a landscape plan that shows where the trees are gonna be and the boulders and set out, and I know that wasn't in our packets, I don't know if there's any way to see that at all. And when is the, also, when is the park, the place structure actually going to be installed? I mean, if there's a timing going on, when is that plan? Can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Director Campbell.
Thank you through the Council President. We do have a drawing. Kyle put something together where the boulders and trees would be placed, as well as the walking path, so we can definitely get that to City Council. And I would have to confer with Kyle about the timing for the new place structure to be installed. Oh, Christina says new place structure is installed. Thank you, Christina.
It's been installed.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any, do you have any additional questions, comments?
Just one last comment. I know you spoke with, through the chair, back to the director, you spoke with Ms. Worm with Norwaine Citizens Council. Is there, was it the whole Citizens Council? Were there, who were, I guess, who were some of the other public? Because I think there's some conversation that some public are saying yes and some are saying no. So, through the chair to Joanne, I guess who else was involved in that?
I'm not aware of any people who are saying no. The Citizens Council totally supported the idea at the April meeting. What month is this? April meeting. And Christina shared that there's been a lot of positive comment on social media regarding the improvements to that park, so. Oh, she asked for input and got positive input, so.
And so, you know, Councilwoman, I was at that April meeting as well of the Norwaine Community Citizens Council, because I participate in the board there, and there was a lot of overwhelming positive comment there.
People that live by the park?
People live in Norwaine.
Not that live by the park.
I don't know exactly where everybody in Norwaine lives that was at that meeting. Councilwoman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. This is one of the longest deliberations we've had on what I consider to be kind of a smaller issue, but when this conversation started in the council here, I kinda was walking one way, but I think it's going the other. So, is the issue, and I guess it's through you to everybody, just so I understand, is the issue here, not the boulders and rocks, but the issue, or the trees and the boulders, but the issue is the funding source? Is that the issue? Is that the issue where we want to take the fifteen grand, put it back towards programming?
I'll gladly respond.
Anybody who can speak up for everybody, so I understand.
And thank you for asking for clarity, and, you know, I think when we're talking about federal-funded money for certain communities, Mr. Hart, that while it might seem like just sticks and stones, it's where people live. So, for me, it's a matter of, you have fifteen thousand dollars being used for something that's very important. You want your boulders. I'm all for your boulders. I have no problem with your boulders. But we have other funding sources, and we've just had, I think we had forty-five minutes of public comment about programming and using those dollars in programming for the community. So, can we do that? Can we reprogram that, that amount of money? And can we go into the ARPA coffers and?
Yeah. Director Campbell, if you'd like to address that.
So, again, just a reminder, when you talk about the programming, that is capped. So, ten thousand, City Council at the February meeting approved to take ten thousand that was allocated under Public Services and allocate it to Norwaine Parks. City Council can decide to reallocate those funds to Public Services. We don't have, so it's, we're talking about the current fiscal year funds.
Right, yeah.
So, like, we couldn't take those, and we have applications, so we have applications for the twenty-five, twenty-six funding round that exceed the amount of money we can spend. We can't take those ten thousand and add it and spend it in twenty-five, twenty-six because we would still be spending more than the cap.
Right.
So, but, but City Council could approve to allocate those funds to this year, but we don't have applications from any groups for the twenty-four, twenty-five year for those funds. Every group that applied for funds in twenty-four, twenty-five was fully funded under Public Services. So, we don't have anybody that received less funding in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay. Thank you, Director Campbell. Then would it be the same, I don't wanna use the word argument, but is it the same case then for Norwaine infrastructure? Could that not be reprogrammed into infrastructure for the community outside of the park? You know, when we're talking about?
Can you dig fifteen thousand worth of culverts by June thirtieth?
Can I invest fifteen thousand dollars to, to the one? You know, because we, at the budget session, we talked about the culverts and the ditches, and it was, it just, they didn't even give us a number. They said it was gonna be, you know, such a huge number, but, you know, sometimes you have to break up projects over multiple years, right? We've done that all over the city. So, is there an opportunity to put that fifteen thousand towards infrastructure if we can't put it towards anything else and come in through the backend with ARPA dollars and a little bit more to make that park just, you know, we can do better, you know, we can do more?
Absolutely, yes. The park funds could be spent on infrastructure rather than parks.
There we go.
And I would come to council for a budget amendment.
Christina, I would love to see that. I would love to see us use the ARPA dollars, back your vision, take your vision a little bit higher, create a little bit more of an equitable opportunity for that park since all the other parks have had renderings and we've received all sorts of information. And I know that you guys don't have engineering firms at your whim, like the city en masse, but let's invest a little bit more. Let's do a little bit better.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Or a lot better.
Was it, was it still my comments, though? She kinda answered my question. I was through the chair to her, so.
He went through you to me.
Can I get to Melissa and I'll get her? Pro Tem Sampe.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's, so that's my concern, too, is looking at the parks in totality, not getting a full plan, not understanding exactly what's happening, the boulders, the trees, the money that can be used for potential programming or infrastructure improvements in the right areas. As Councilwoman Rakowski said, we do have ARPA funding that we can use in other ways. So, it's getting creative with funding, not just go ahead and spending money in areas that we shouldn't have to. We can use the money in other ways. So, my, I guess, holdback right now is to say, can we, and I know that there's other people that want to talk, I would like to postpone this item, as I said before, and let's go back, take a step back, and review the money to spend it properly.
Thank you. Councilman Hart.
Council President and I yield.
Okay. Councilwoman Hornbuckle, you had your light on, too.
No, I agree. I would like to hold off and understand, because I'm still confused, because we talking about ten grand. Ten grand was last year, it's this five grand next year. I have some extra questions, but I don't want to hold up the beautiful people that's here today, so I can wait.
I will just make this final comment, and then we can move on to your motion if you want to make that motion. You know, we did discuss this in deliberating what the plan looks like. I think if we went out for a rendering for what this looks like, the cost to pay an engineering firm to give us a rendering for boulders and trees is going to exponentially and potentially eat into whatever budget we want to allocate, pull out of this and allocate towards a, another community program. So, whether it's, this goes out to bid for an engineering firm like an OHM or a Hennessy to, well, to get a rendering, I mean, we're not.
Just to talk about it.
Well, the word rendering was.
More than sticks and stones in a park.
I'm speaking, please, thank you. The word rendering, I'm only bringing up the word rendering because it was mentioned during the comments about having a rendering. And typically, when we have a rendering on something, we go through an engineering firm to design the rendering. But that's all the comments I have. I will pass the torch if you'd like to make the motion.
I would like to make a motion to postpone new business item. Is it A, one A?
One A.
Thank you.
Two.
Two, and like indefinitely.
Until we have a study session. Or, no, we can.
Table it, we'll just bring it back on.
We can table it, then that's fine. We don't need a study session, just to table it until further discussion.
You're gonna make a motion to table?
Yes.
Okay. There was a motion on the floor to table new business item one A. Is there support?
Support.
There's support by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman. Councilman Hart.
Yep.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wisher.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
President McDermott.
No.
Motion passes. The item is tabled. New business. Item two. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held April seven, two thousand twenty-five.
There's a motion by Councilman Hornbuckle, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? No. Any additional discussion from the council? All right, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Staying with the access?
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilman Wisher.
Yes.
Pro Tem Sampe.
Yes.
President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item three. Nomination of member to the zoning Board of Appeals for a three-year term effective upon confirmation and to expire May twelve, two thousand twenty-eight. Current ZBA president, Eileen DeHart Schuf, has submitted a letter requesting consideration for reappointment.
Council President.
Councilwoman Rakowski, please.
That's fine. John Ken Ponray, I'd like to nominate Eileen DeHart Schuf. That's what I was just going to say, but we had a motion. He threw me with the motion, so.
Thank you. Thank you. There was a nomination for Eileen DeHart Schuf for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Thank you, Councilwoman Rakowski. And there is a motion to close nominations. Is there support?
Support.
Motion to close nominations by Councilman Hornbuckle, supported by Councilman Hart.
Ask for dissent.
Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing hearing none, nominations are closed.
New business. Item four. Now, hold on until I get it done.
It's a motion this time, right?
Appointment of member to the ZBA for three years effective upon confirmation, expiring May twelve, two thousand twenty-eight. Eileen DeHart Schuf has been nominated.
So moved.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Thank you, Council President. I think anybody who has been an active part of the city for any amount of time should be well-aware of Eileen and all of her varied accomplishments throughout the city and the state, and we are certainly very lucky to have her continue to be involved. So, thank you for your desire, and, you know, I think she's, as long as we can keep her, let's keep her, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any discussion from the supporter?
Echo the same comments, who better else would you want on this board than her? So, I definitely support this.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hart.
Yeah, just real quick. Eileen, thank you. Thank you for being willing to come back. We're always so thankful for all your talents and skills, and I am not bashful for taking and using them, so thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hart. Pro Tem Sampe.
Thank you. Thank you, Eileen, so much for coming back to Westland, a legend in, in all of our minds because you are. And thank you for sharing your talents with Westland. It really is an honor to have you involved in the city, so thank you.
Is there any other discussion from the council?
If I may, I bet you all wish two other items would get passed.
Support.
I will just say, for those that don't know, Eileen DeHart, and if you've lived in the city long enough, you should know her because she's been involved in almost every capacity. As my colleague, Councilwoman Rakowski, mentioned, she's served from the state level as a state representative on down to being up here on the city council and in this seat right here as a clerk as well. So, Eileen has a record of over thirty years of service here in the Westland community in many different capacities and a record of volunteering in the community, and her institutional knowledge to be on, you know, ZBA and to help us out and help new people that come on the board and bring them along is really something that is invaluable. So, we thank you for your continued service. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Stand to be recognized, please.
New business. Item five. Adoption of paired resolution authorizing the allocation of ARPA funds for the Cherry Hills Sidewalk Connectivity Project in an amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars.
So moved.
Is there support? There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Council President, I would encourage you to speak on this. This has been something that you have been advocating for for quite a, quite a long time, so I'd like to yield my time to you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Councilwoman, I appreciate that. First and foremost, I want to thank all of my colleagues for having this discussion with me. This was something that we had discussed on the ARPA Subcommittee, initially myself, Councilwoman Rakowski, and Councilman Delano Hornbuckle. There is a stretch of sidewalk down Cherry Hill Road between Wayne Road and Wildwood that has quite a few gaps in it, and it's a significant problem, not only because of the sidewalk gaps, but because we know a lot of kids utilize that area to walk to Wildwood Elementary right there along Wildwood. And so, being able to connect this gap of sidewalk will be in line with our walk and roll program that we set up here in the city of Westland. And I know it's been a couple of years since we've really visited that hard, and we spent a lot of your tax dollars investing and putting a lot of time, effort, and money into the walk and roll program, so it's nice to get back to that. And it also helps the kids that are walking to school, they don't have to traipse through people's front lawns, through the snow, through the mud. So, having the opportunity to have sidewalk all the way through from Wayne all the way up to Wildwood down Cherry Hill is going to help the kids that go to school. And as someone who lives over in that area, I know Councilman Hornbuckle does as well, we see just a lot of the general public beyond the kids that are walking through there to, you know, go to some of the stores and shops and restaurants that are along Wayne Road and along Cherry Hill as well. So, this is a significant sidewalk gap, a significant stretch of sidewalk that will be connected, and I thank my colleague for, you know, yielding her time, and I thank my colleagues for having discussion and deliberation on this issue. I also want to thank our DPS Director, Ramsey Elgarib, who did send the council a cost Director Ramsey Elgarib, who did send the council a cost breakdown of why the project is a $400,000 cost with some detail and specificity. So I thank Director Elgarib for that as well. Is there discussion from the supporter?
Yes, not.
Okay. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any dissent?
No.
Oh, sorry, Councilman, I apologize.
Now, I'm just gonna put my two cents in here, or 10 cents now. I definitely will be supporting this. That area is really hard for the kids to get to school, and it's important that our kids be able to walk safely to school. Right now, the kids have to go on one side of the street and then come back across the street, and that can be dangerous, especially in that area. So I'd definitely be supporting this, and I'm glad we're finally getting that done. I know a lot of parents, our crossing guards would be happier, too. So definitely looking forward to this taking place. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. Thank you.
New business, item 6, approval of purchase of one ambulance for the fire department in an amount not to exceed $293,943.
So moved.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
A few years ago, we purchased three, is it right, Chief, three ambulances at one, or rescues, excuse me, at once, right? I think you and I shared a vision of that not exactly all happening at one time. But we're a city with a busy department. Those ambulances and rescue runs are unbelievable how many we do, and I hope this is the beginning of us buying these apparatus for the fire department in a more, I want to use the word responsible, but more fiscally advantageous manner, instead of buying three at once, and they all start aging at the same time.
Did you have any, did you want to add off that, or?
That gets so far.
Okay, all right. And then was there any discussion from the supporter?
Not so far.
Okay. Pro Tem Sampi?
Thank you. Just for clarification purposes, so Chief, if you want to say on record, the purchase of this ambulance for the fire department is actually out of our fire station, I don't know the account number, it's actually used for the new fire station 2, or it will be used for the new fire station 2. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I guess I'll just speak for a minute, just so maybe you can avoid further questions on this one. I probably should have just took advantage of that when I had a shot. So, yeah, so this will, to answer your question, yes, that will come out of the Station 2 capital improvement line, which is the state grant monies. Specifically, we were able to free up that money from something that was going to be purposed to clean up some of the property there, but we were able to reclass that to Brownfield, using the monies that was originally appropriated for this project several years ago to clean up that property. So that allowed the money back into that budget to purchase this ambulance. And just to kind of go just a little bit further, maybe to save some questions, so this will be replacing a 2017 ambulance, which is currently a frontline ambulance. We don't like to go over five years on those and 150,000 miles. We put the average of, on our frontline ambulances, just for everybody that may be in the crowd and those that may be watching this later, we put about 30,000 miles on each of our ambulances annually, our frontline ambulances. So to go eight years now and 171,000 on a frontline ambulance is kind of pushing the limit there. We did put an extra ambulance in service, which is kind of what put us in this position, so to speak, which is a good position to be in. But, you know, a couple of years ago, we put a fifth ambulance in service, kind of when staffing allowed. Last year, we increased that to putting a fifth ambulance in service all the time, which is for everybody again, which is right behind us as station number one. The reason we put a fifth ambulance there is because when we did some studies there, 77% of the time, people who lived in this area, if they called 911, an ambulance wouldn't be available, because they were out on another run. So we needed that ambulance here. You know, the mayor's been super supportive of public safety, got him to commit to the idea of putting a fifth ambulance in service all the time, which put us in this position. So, yes, we replaced three ambulances, two 2022s and a 2023 with ARPA monies a couple of years ago, but a better idea will be to replace an ambulance every year, which would then, again, make the service life five years on the frontline, and then we can put those in reserve for, you know, three to five years after that. Hopefully, that answered all of the questions.
Thank you, Chief. That's actually what I was looking for, because that's the exact conversation that him and I had. I said, hey, why are we buying another one? So thank you, Chief, because those that are watching at home, those in the audience, they probably want to know, why are we buying another ambulance at the tune of, you know, close to $300,000? So thank you for the explanation, and it's great to know that we're able to have our apparatuses and ambulances and all those items up to date. So thank you.
Chief, yes?
One more thing. The other part that actually is very important to this conversation that I left out is, kind of the push for this one specifically is ambulance availability, both ambulances and fire trucks are two to, well, on an engine side, which you'll hear more about this coming up, because there's been some bipartisan support at the federal level to look into this. But, you know, it's a four to five-year wait on an engine. So if I order a fire truck today, whether that be a ladder or just the fire engine itself, is four to five years. So if we order one today, we're not going to take delivery for that four to five years. On the ambulance side of things, it's two to three years. So if I were to order an ambulance today, we're not going to get that for two or three years. There are, there is one available, which is why I've kind of made the push to get this done tonight, that they're willing to, that they were willing to hold for us, but that wouldn't, they wouldn't extend that kind of offer to hold that for us for very long. So that was the push there, again, in ordering an ambulance every year. Even if I were to order an ambulance today, I'm not going to see that for two to three years. So that puts something at the eight-year mark, up to 10 or 11 years before we can replace that. So I think that's another piece that's important to throw in here. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? I will just add two things real quick. One, I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Rakowski, for reminding all of us, and, you know, reminding the general public that we want to stay on the vehicle purchase plan and not be in a situation like we were a few years ago, scrambling and buying three or four or five vehicles, whether they're fire or police vehicles, all at once. And that by doing this, that keeps us on track to basically purchase a rescue every year. So thank you for making note of that. And then I want to thank the mayor and the chief, the administration, for bringing this forward, independent of the budget, and making sure that we get this done now, because there is an opportunity to purchase it now, whereas if we waited till, you know, past July, we lose out on that window, some other city gets this ambulance, this rescue, and then we're placing an order and getting it six, eight months, a year, year and a half from now. So thank you to the administration, the mayor, for getting this ball rolling and getting it forward as well. Is there any dissent from the council? Any dissent? Seeing and hearing none, motion passes.
New business, item 7, approval of special lane use for proposed pet crematorium at 38092 Abruzzi Drive, northeast corner of Hicks and Marquette. This is planning department number 1608A. Administration and planning department recommend approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Director Ayoub?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, City Council. The subject property here is Zoned I-1 Light Industrial. It includes a single-story 4,600-square-foot building that is currently vacant. The subject property is located in an industrial park surrounded by both industrial zoning and industrial uses. The petitioner tonight, Ms. Green, is seeking special land use approval to retrofit the building for a pet cremation facility. Currently, the hours of operation are unknown. There are no modifications being proposed to the existing site. This parcel was previously developed by the existing industrial building and contains access from Florence over here. Let me turn my, oh, point around. Over here is where access is provided with existing parking that is compliant, in compliance with the previously approved site plan. The 2018 City of Westland Master Plan Future Land Use Designation for the site is industrial, and crematoriums are only permitted in the industrial zoning district, subject to special land use approval by the city council. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this on April 8, and is recommending approval. Additionally, you may want to know that the building official has been in touch with Ms. Green on hooking up the equipment needed to run the pet cremation operation. She's here in attendance today and can answer any questions that you may have on the operation itself. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the staff report as well.
Thank you, Director Ayoub. Would the petitioner like to come forward, please, to take questions from the council? Before I turn the council loose for questions, anything you'd like to add?
No, just good evening, Council Mayor. Yes, I'm Dr. Green. I'm a veterinarian, and I'm transitioning my business to pet cremation. This isn't just a standard pet cremation oven, this is an electric oven, and so there's not going to be natural gas input. It's just the three-phase electrical is all you need, 30,000 kilowatt-hours a year for operation, and pretty straightforward. Should be no real emissions, and, yeah, I'll take your questions now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Anything from the maker?
Yeah, real brief, not a comfortable topic, but, you know, it's, I've had to use these services before, from, twice, unfortunately, from an organization that you know probably where they're out on school craft. So this is something a lot of people are doing. We do it with ours. I hope never have to do it again, but reality says I will. So just knowing that, you know, maybe it's a little bit closer, a little bit easier for some people, seems like something that just makes sense that we should do. So I'll be in support. Thank you, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything from the supporter?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. Good evening, Dr. Green. Thank you for the service. It is something that a lot of us pet owners, it's a dread, but I think one of the points that you highlighted that's especially important, beyond the care and love of our pets, would be the fact that it doesn't have emissions. And that's, you know, equally important, as we're battling so many different issues environmentally. So thank you for highlighting that, and I will also be in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pro Tem Sampi?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Green, for your service. I, too, had recently put down my furry friend and use the service, so I understand. It's a difficult business. With that being said, it is a new project for you, or is this a business that you currently have?
It's a new project.
Okay, a new project. Are you working with just veterinarians and working with them on the cremation and delivery of ashes and the body? Okay.
It will be primarily responsible for the transportation.
You will, okay.
Primary client will be the veterinarian.
Okay.
We will have access for the public as well.
Okay.
But typically, businesses like these, it's usually about 90% veterinarian, 10% public.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for sharing the business model and obviously what you do. Thank you.
Councilwoman Baumann?
Thanks. Yes, again, thank you. I know this is, as I was researching some of this, it is a difficult topic, because it's, you know, it is our pets. I do have a couple more technical, I guess, questions. At the Planning Commission, you mentioned, you mentioned a number of how many you thought you would do in a year. What was that number?
It was, if we grow the business, 5,000 a year.
Okay.
So about...
And I'm guessing that would actually mean additional ovens, is that?
It will be, yeah, yeah.
Okay, because when I kind of did the cut...
Right now, we just have one.
What's that?
Just have one for now, but yes.
One for now, okay. Yeah, because, so, because when I was trying to do the calculation, because there's an estimate of how long this, it takes, and, sorry, I don't want to get so, but I just, but, and I'm glad to hear about the emissions, because I did hear of some issues with some previous ones, and it did, it was related to what comes out and smells and things like that. So I'm glad that that's not something that we would be experiencing with this.
Yeah, if done properly, there shouldn't be any smells. There's a pre, or a primary chamber and a secondary chamber, and the secondary chamber only emits carbon dioxide and water. So what you should see, if done properly, is just that shimmer you'll see on the road. Sometimes, when you're driving on a hot day, it should look like that from the stack.
That's what I, that's what I was reading. Okay, so thank you. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
All set? Thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you.
New business, item 8, approval of special land use for proposed church and fellowship hall located at 220 and 230 South Vanoy, west side of Vanoy, south of Cherry Hill. This is planning department number 1453H. Administration and planning department recommend approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
So motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Pro Tem Sampi. Director Ayoub?
Thank you. Subject property here is about four acres in size. It is all Zoned CB2, shopping center, commercial business, and contains a 24,000-square-foot retail plaza. The petitioner is requesting special land use approval to operate a church and fellowship hall in one of the approximately 4,000-square-foot vacant spaces. This red square highlighted area here is where the special land use is proposed. Religious institutions are classified as special land uses in the CB2 zoning district, and therefore, that's why the petitioner's here tonight. Similar to the last case, there's no modifications being proposed to the existing site. The parcel was developed and previously exists in compliance with the previously approved site plan, providing site access off of both Vanoy in these two areas and also Cherry Hill over here. There's also 186 parking spaces, also in compliance with that previously approved site plan. Proposed hours of operation by the petitioner for the church and fellowship hall are Tuesday, 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., Wednesday, 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., and Sunday in the morning, 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The future land use designation for the site is neighborhood, commercial, and office services. The church and fellowship hall, we feel, is consistent with that designation. Similar to the previous case, this was on the April 8 Planning Commission agenda, and the Planning Commission is recommending approval. There were no members of the public that came out and spoke in favor or in opposition to this case. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know Mr. Perry is here in the audience, I believe he spoke earlier as well. Thank you.
And Mr. Perry, if you'd like to come up here and add anything, you are more than welcome.
Well, I mean, I ain't got nothing else.
Okay, all right. So we're going to turn the council loose for questions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
Thank you for being here. And I think what struck me, you know, we get the packets and we get to read information, and, you know, we can come to conclusions, but having heard you speak about your own reconciliation of your life is very heartfelt, and I praise you and thank you for coming back to a place that, you know, might have put you a little bit on the wrong path, but it looks like you turned it around. So one of the things we need in all of our communities is mentorship, and it looks like that's something that you're trying to do for, not just our young people, but for all of the wayward people. So I don't think there's, you know, Director Ayoub didn't say there was any challenges, and, you know, if you just want to do good things and reconcile, I love that. I think that's wonderful. So I'll be in support of this. The only question I have is when you talked about your revivals, how much room are you going to take up with your bounce houses and stuff?
So we do the revivals in Norwain.
Okay, wonderful.
So there's a park right behind Dorsey Park.
Yep.
So we go behind there. We've been doing it for 10 years already.
Wonderful.
And so we go over there, and we just, we set up tents and bounce houses there. We've already been doing it for years, so we're going to continue to do that this year as well. We do three, or four a year, and so that's what we do already. We don't really do anything on that premise. We're not going to do anything on that premise. That's just going to be the fellowship. That's where we have recovery meetings and different things, and we have a bus that'll pick them up, take them, because we help out with Safe Step and the three courthouse in the area as well.
That's fantastic. Well, good luck to you. Thank you for your already, your commitment already to the Norwain community, and I wish you the best of luck in your, you know, continued endeavors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Pro Tem Sampi?
Thank you, Mr. Perry, for speaking. I appreciate anyone that shares the story of just turning their life around, and I think it says a lot about your character for wanting to come back to a community that you felt that you created some ruckus. I thought that was kind of funny. I said, you know, you need individuals to come back and share their stories. I said, you know, you need individuals to come back and share their stories. It makes good character, but it also makes for a community. So I have no problem with this. This is not a chicken place, ladies and gentlemen. This is not a car wash. This is a fellowship hall. So I think this is going to be great. And like I said, anytime that we can bring community and fellowship and the word of God and just bringing people together to celebrate life, you know, that's what it's about. So in full support of this, I wish you the best of luck. And it sounds to me like you're trying to stay deep-rooted in the community with doing things in the community. So that's a sign of a really good fellowship. So, so thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, like I said, I grew up, I went to Wildwood Elementary. Went to John Glenn, didn't graduate from there, got kicked out of there, but we won't talk about that. But, you know, like with Paul Motz, you know, speaking with, you know, speaking to the kids and being able to give back to this, this community that I went to Marshall Middle School. So I'm very familiar, my stepdad still lives in the house that I grew up at. So don't look at my record, don't look it up, please. Let's just keep that what it is and just know that we do change, right? Seventeen years later, I have seventeen years clean and sober. I've changed my life around, so I just want to continue to give back.
Well, here's what I'll say. You came back, you turned your life around, you're willing to make a difference in the community. It's not where you started, it's where you're going.
That's right.
So thank you.
Councilwoman Malin.
I just want to share. Thank you also. And I do, I get encouraged because you're already holding Bible studies and you're already doing these things and you're just looking for a nice, another place to do this. And again, I want to thank you. I know one of the questions that always is asked is like, if Jesus came back, would he go to the churches or would he go where the people need them and need him? And that's what I feel like you're looking, like you're doing, and I appreciate that. So yes, I'm definitely in support of an opportunity for this, so.
Well, we do call ourselves the church in the streets.
I like that. I saw that. That was actually really neat to say. Yes, you're, because you're out there, you're doing it.
Yeah, we're out there.
And that's where, that's where he'd be too, so.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yeah, I'm just going to give you a pound of back as well. Try not to get sentimental here, but I want to thank you for what you're doing. You know, it's people like you that helps people like me. You know, people that been down the road, that wasn't right, but come back and pull a young guy up and say, "Thank you, don't do this," and pull them right away. So I want to thank you, even though when you directly, but you helped me get here, so thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? I will just add, this is a tremendous social support service for so many people in our community. And especially when someone can speak from a lived experience and say that I have screwed up and look at where I'm at now and look at where I was 15, 20 years ago, those personal stories I know are so powerful in helping change a person's life. Lots of kids get assigned to a social worker or a psychologist who has no personal relationship with that person whatsoever. But when they have individual mentors like yourself who've been there, folks like our mentors in Paul Motz's Youth Assistance Program who've been there and done that can speak from real lived experience, I think those stories are so incredibly powerful. So thank you for what you're doing here. Thank you for what you do for, you know, kids and people of all ages in the community. I will be in full support of this. We very much appreciate what you're doing here. Is there, I can't imagine, but any dissent? Any dissent?
Last and foremost, you know, my dad was killed by a drunk driver on Wayne Road, so I'm committed to the city.
I'm sorry to hear that. Well, thank you for your commitment. If there is no dissent, then the motion passes unanimously.
Item nine. Approval of site plan and special land use for proposed nursing and rehabilitation center located at 1155 North Wayne Road, north side of Marquette, west of Wayne. This is Planning Department number 1707J. Administration and Planning Department recommend approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Is there a motion?
A sub move.
Is there support? There's a motion by Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilman Wishart. Director Ayub.
Thank you. The subject site here, about 17 acres in size. It's zoned CB1, low-intensity commercial business district. The City Council approved a rezoning request to the CB1 designation several months ago to allow the petitioner to proceed in requesting site plan and special land use approval, which is what is on the table tonight. This is, this request is to develop a 24-hour skilled nursing home with 98 private suites, each including a private bathroom and shower. The skilled nursing home will provide rehabilitation and physical therapy services, the majority being inpatient, along with a limited amount of those services being provided for outpatient services. The nursing home will also offer a broad range of amenities and social activities for its residents and include a dining hall and kitchen. Property to the north is zoned R5, single-family residential and is vacant. Property to the south is also zoned R5, single-family residential and is vacant. That's across the street from Marquette on the south side. Properties to the east are zoned CB1, low-intensity commercial business and developed by single-family dwellings. And properties to the west are zoned PUD, planned unit development, and are developed by the Abbeys of Westland. And also SPD, special planning, special plan development, and developed by the Marquette House, an assisted living community. Next, I'm going to just summarize some of the site plan characteristics. The site will be accessed by two full-service drives, I'm sorry, one full-service drive off of Campus Drive over here. This drive will only be accessible for emergency services and it will be gated. The other driveway will be at Marquette. The site requires 77 parking spaces. There are 119 spaces provided. Landscape screening is provided in excess of the minimum requirements. The petitioner worked with the Abbeys' residents to provide a majority of the landscaping on the site over here to screen the development from the Abbeys' living community, which exists over here to the west. There is also a detention basin here for stormwater management, along with some landscaping, trees and shrubs to screen the site additionally from Marquette Avenue as well. The proposed building will be constructed using a variety of building materials, including stone, brick, and vinyl siding. As you can see on the screen, it has a residential, it's residential in character. The proposed building height is 30 feet. The maximum lot coverage is 11.2%. The maximum allowed is 40%, so that's significantly under the allowable maximum. The front setback requirement is 15 feet. This building is setback 256 feet. The proposed side yard setback required is 15 feet. This building is setback 50 feet. And the rear yard is required to be 20 feet. It's setback at 183. As mentioned earlier, stormwater management is provided and will have to be reviewed and approved by Wayne County. There are a variety of exterior lighting provided, including lighting in the ceiling canopy, pole-mounted LED lights, bollards containing lighting, and the poles will be a maximum of 20 feet. That is the maximum allowed by the zoning ordinance. There is a photometric plan in your backup that shows that all of this lighting is in compliance with the required standards. The 2018 future land use designation for this site is residential. And during the rezoning case, we discussed that the skilled nursing home facility is consistent with that objective, providing residential care and 24/7 support for its residents. There have been a variety of changes made to the site plan that was presented to the Planning Commission on March 4. Those modifications have been updated and reflected in your packet. All of those address or are consistent with the five comments that Ms. Powers stated on the record earlier during public comment. And my understanding is Ms. Powers has served as kind of a facilitator between the Abbeys' residential community and the nursing home, particularly with the architect and engineer. Those major modifications were to remove the full-access driveways off of Campus Drive. So again, now there's one fully accessible driveway on Marquette and one driveway that is only accessible and gated, accessible to fire services as needed, if needed. Hopefully, it is not needed. There was also a lot of comments at the Planning Commission meeting in March about Google or Apple Maps or any navigation services navigating you through the Abbeys because of a campus drive address. Since the driveways were removed off of Campus Drive and provided on Marquette, we will, if approved, assign a Marquette address, alleviating and mitigating any of those concerns. We also address construction traffic, which we will deal with in the field as needed. And the setback off of Campus Drive, as I mentioned earlier, is 50 feet with additional landscape screening. The Planning Commission, after this was tabled and after those modifications were made, felt comfortable to make unanimous recommendation to approve. And that's what's being presented to you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the architect is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. If the petitioner would like to come forward? If you have anything you'd like to add before we turn it over to the council?
I'm glad to have a chance to talk with the council here and the mayor. My name is Carl Holbrook. I'm the Corporate Executive Director for Progressive Quality Care. We've tried to work with the, with our engineers and the community to move the building as much as we could, to provide screening as much as we could. What we're providing is different than most of the nursing homes in Michigan. Michigan's nursing homes, for the vast majority of them, were built in the 60s and 70s, so they're approaching 50 years old. What we're coming in with is basically a five-star hotel with health care. It's very upscale. It's something with the private rooms that most of the homes in Michigan don't offer. We think we have a product that is really needed. Vast majority of our residents are in a nursing home within three, four miles of the building. So they're your community people will be living here. It's quite an investment also. We're going to put about $26 million into the building. Be about a $5 million payroll. We will be using mostly local plumbers and HVAC people, electricians, where our construction company only has five employees. So we hire, we bid, put out for bids and hire subs locally for those other things. So that labor will be taken out of the community here as well. So I'm open for any questions. We have one of our engineers here. Our architect is not here, unfortunately.
Okay. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. It's nice to see you. I think your architect probably got a bit of us last time. We, I think we raked him over the coals pretty good. But that being said, there's a lot at stake, not only for you and the investment that you want to make, but for the residents that live and have expressed some, you know, very important concerns. And, you know, in our city, and I imagine your architect probably relayed some of this information, we do have quite a number of, I'm going to use nursing homes for the broader term of, you know, elder care facilities. And they're, they've become overly dependent upon our public safety services, especially our fire department. You know, there's quite a number of runs that are non-emergency, that they're utilizing our emergency care. And that's taking away from the other residents in the community who need them to respond to heart attacks and other maladies. And so we're really fortunate. We have a wonderful chief who's worked with our concerns. He's drafted an ordinance. And, you know, I want to get, I kind of want to change some of the ways we do things. And I'm kind of tired of reactive politics, so I'd like to be proactive. So at this point, I'm going to make a motion to table this. There's too many moving parts. There's an ordinance that needs to be discussed. There's discontent with the community. And I think it needs to be tabled until, I guess we could postpone it until that ordinance has been brought to the council to be reviewed. I think I want to postpone.
I support.
So it's a motion to postpone for council to review an ordinance, pass an ordinance, and also meet with the residents that want to discuss their challenges. I'd also like, so that's my motion.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Councilman Hornbuckle for taking charge and, and meeting with those residents, as well as Council Pro Tem Sampi for really hearing their plea. I have, I have no problem with your business model. I have no problem with what you want to do. But we're in charge of trying to make sure that the community, yeah, it's developed and that would be wonderful, but I have residents that are discontented and I have services that are overused by facilities like yours without any way of recourse.
May I respond to that?
You absolutely can.
As a skilled nursing facility, we have contracts with ambulance companies and they will provide the majority of our transport. The only transport we would call on emergency services for would be a true emergency. And remembering that these are members of your community, the majority of those calls they would have answered anyway in the community. We will cut their load down by being able to arrange for our contracted ambulance companies and provide medical emergency care onsite ourselves. So it actually should reduce the number of runs if the people are living in our facility as opposed to at home.
And as I said, and I won't continue a back-and-forth discourse with you, it's not just your facility. It just happens to be today that you're the facility that's coming forward and adding to a run number of our services. And, you know, it's certainly, you know, one of our biggest expenses as a community, and I'm sure you know this, in any other community, is our public safety, our police and fire department. And every time that that police department and fire department are outside doing a run for a private business that, and I'm sure you have all sorts of contracts and I'm sure you're, you know, have all sorts of skilled workers. And I'm sure it's a very lovely facility. But until I know that any facility that's going to be tying up resources for anybody else because it's non-emergency, they don't want to call a private ambulance company, I'm not going to be happy. So I'd like, I stated my motion. I've asked for support. Thank you, Council President.
All right. There is a motion on the floor at this time to postpone until the council has the opportunity to further discuss this item and review the subsequent ordinance that is coming down the pipeline. That motion was by Councilwoman Rakowski. It was supported by Councilman Hart. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
On that motion?
Yes. Okay, we can do, sorry, I apologize. Yep, discussion on the motion.
So my question is, for a postponement, is there any way we can pick a date that we can actually put some guideline out or even a goal of a date that we want to put this as a postpone until, not obscure, but an actual date?
Well, since I have no control over this council's schedule, the legal department's schedule, nor Chief Stanford's schedule, I would have to allow the council president to make that. Would you like to leave the residence to?
Yeah, I think putting a specific date would really kind of pigeonhole us into making a rash decision. We, by not putting a date on it, we can have the proper discussion that we want to have. With residents, we can have the ordinance reviewed as well and then brought upon an agenda item.
It's on that tabling it. That's why I'm holding it so it can come out.
Any other discussion, Councilwoman? Is there any other discussion on the motion to postpone? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion to postpone passes.
Item 10. Approval of site plan and special land use for proposed Dunkin' Donuts drive-through restaurant, 34215 Ford Road.
Donuts drive-through restaurant, 34215 Ford Road, east of Wildwood. This is Planning Department number 2274. Administration and Planning Department recommend approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Director Ayoub?
Thank you. Subject property here is approximately 27,000 square feet. It's Zone CB3, general commercial business. The site contains an existing residential-like building. You may know it as the former Ruth Olson Photography Studio, which is where I had my senior pictures done in '07. Tonight, the petitioner is requesting site plan and special land use approval to demolish the existing building and construct a drive-through Dunkin' Donuts. This is a relocation of the existing Dunkin' Donuts, I believe a block west, at 34417 Ford Road. The hours of operation that are being proposed at this time are 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily. Property to the north is Zone R2, single-family residential. It's the site of Cadillac Memorial Garden Cemetery. Property to the south is located in the city of Garden City, who's also properly noticed, and is the site of the former Radcliffe Center, and now the Garden City Recreation Center. Property to the west is CB1, low-intensity commercial business, and is developed by Thrifty Florist. And property to the east is Zone CB1, low-intensity commercial business, and is developed by a childcare center. The site will be accessed by a full-service driveway at Ford Road. They're actually reusing the existing drive. The site complies with the parking and stacking requirement for a drive-through restaurant of this exact size. There's eight stacking spaces being provided. In regards to landscaping, I'm sorry, I don't have the landscaping plan up. Well, that's not a good reflection of it. But you have it in your backup. There's a six-foot-high masonry screening wall being proposed along the south side to screen that adjacent Garden City Community Center. Landscaping is proposed additionally throughout the site, exceeding minimum requirements. There's an ornamental three-foot-tall decorative fence with piers along the front property line, consistent with what you see and what is required in the DDA on Ford Road, a little west of the site. Again, there's a detailed description in your backup. The new building, here's a rendering up on the screen. Below is facing Ford. It's constructed using fiber cement paneling and metal for accent material. And the building and, and the site itself complies with all of the bulk requirements of the CB3 zoning district, which includes the setbacks height and lot coverage. The proposed use is consistent with the future land use designation of neighborhood, commercial, and office services. The proposed drive-through is located within the Ford Road corridor with sufficient capacity to handle drive-through traffic. There are also a number of drive-through restaurants in this area that coexist without any negative impacts on the existing roadway. The site plan was accompanied by a traffic impact study developed by a traffic, certified traffic engineer. It's also in your backup. The study examined potential traffic impacts within the site and within the adjacent roadways, and found no significant impact on those operations internally and on the adjacent roadway. And just to note again, that the traffic study noted no issues with the stacking being provided. Similar to the previous cases, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at its April meeting, held a public hearing. No one came and spoke in opposition or in favor of it. And therefore, the Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is the petitioner present?
Yes. Sorry. Yes.
Good evening. And if you have anything you'd like to add before we turn the council over to questions, please feel free.
You did a very good job, as usual.
Okay. Was there any questions from the mayor?
Sure, why not? Right. So are you the petitioner? Are you the owner?
I'm the architect.
You're the architect. Very good. So I really don't have any big concerns. I know why you're doing it. You can't be competitive in the other building without a drive-through.
Correct.
So that makes sense. I mean, good for the operator, because now that Tim Hortons is not there in operation, so it's going to steer more business to them. Not good for Westland, but good for Dunkin' Donuts. Just a question through the chair to Moe. Can we get, kind of moving forward, can we get some updated GIS data? This still shows the old bar and everything in the corner where Popeyes has been for quite a while. So when we look at these?
My IT director is sitting right next to me.
Can you talk to your IT director? Yeah, we're just, a lot of times we look at this, you know, this is pretty dated. So, I mean, we're familiar with it. But, you know, if we just get some updated data, you know, I don't know when GIS is due to update the overlay for Google Earth here, but it's helpful for us.
Yes, sir. No problem.
Especially when it's been like four, five years. So, but other than that, no, I've got no other questions. Council President, I will be supporting this. Makes sense. Coffee shops are good. Everybody wants one. And everybody wants one with a drive-through. Nobody wants to go in one anymore. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything from the supporter?
I think, Council President, I am not iffy on this at all. It is currently right next to a daycare, and I don't enjoy having more traffic right next to it. As someone who's come intimately familiar in the last two months with that facility, it is impossible to get out of that driveway. And there's kids running through that parking lot, getting in and out of the cars, or it's the bus service that takes them to the schools. While I don't necessarily see a reason why I wouldn't want to vote yes for it, I have just massive concern with that alone. It is a, in my opinion, a safety issue, because kids don't pay attention. That's all, Council President.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Any other comments? I will just say that I will be in support of this. It's going to be a new investment in the community to expand the footprint of Dunkin' Donuts and create more business. So I appreciate the reinvestment here in the community. Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Yep.
Okay. We are now on to the public comment portion of the agenda. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, on city staff, on members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions during this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the three minutes is done speaking, or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Public comment on my right. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Patricia Fennick. I live on Patricia Place Drive. My problem is speeding on Superior Parkway and Patricia Place Drive. This is an ongoing problem. Called the police department many, many times, many, twice, I've called the police department, and I talked to the officer, answered the phone. He gets, he puts me on hold, and he says, "Ma'am, call Canton." I live in Westland. Why would I call Canton?
You wouldn't?
I don't think it's funny.
He's a sergeant.
I don't think it's funny at all.
Ma'am, we actually have a member of our traffic bureau here who, right over there.
I've contacted him, never got a response, never got a phone call.
Well, he's here personally, so we can have him stand there.
I called the mayor's office, talked to Mr. Goddard. Well, nothing happened. Okay. It's been going on and on. And it's the people who live in that area who are doing it. At my side of Brookville Village, there are 55 homes. One-third of those homes, the residents park across the sidewalks. They park over the approach and on the sidewalk. So if you're walking down the street, you can't walk on the sidewalk. You've got to walk on the street. And we have elderly people, children going to school, they have to walk on the street with these fools speeding up and down. And they're the people who live there. I want to thank the fire department for coming to my home when my husband was very sick. They came many times. I want to thank you very much. I've seen the police department in my neighborhood three times in the past two years. One time when my neighbor died, had a heart attack. One time when my husband died, and the EMS, they waited for EMS, and they were parked on, the police, the third time, the police were parked on Superior Parkway, and cars were going north and south, and they didn't stop one car speeding. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And ma'am, if you could stay afterwards, we're going to have...
Yeah, wait, it's 10 o'clock. I'm not waiting anymore. Maybe I should go to Canton. Maybe they'll help me out.
Yeah, just real quick, ma'am.
Mrs. Fennick, Mrs. Fennick, Patricia Fennick. Hey, I just want to let you know, we're going to do enforcement in your neighborhood. I've gotten the message, and I've talked, I know I've been at your home, and I've talked to you. I've talked to our traffic sergeant and our chief. But if there's still an issue, I'll make sure we send enforcement out there, okay? You got my word?
Yeah, I know.
I know you're frustrated.
Just today, Mayor, just today...
Okay, ma'am, sorry. We, if you want to come up to speak in just a second?
They won't let us do a back and forth. But I'll have the traffic sergeant talk to you right now, if you could.
Sergeant Perez is right over there, so he'd be willing to talk to you, ma'am. Is there anyone on my left wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Hines.
Good evening, council. My name is Melody Hines. I'm with the Wayne Westland Board of Education. I'm really excited. We're going to promote an event. There's an amazing lady in the community. Her name is Miss Adelina Robinson, and she has a daycare called Kids' Purpose Learning Center. Right down the street is 24 Hours. She does transportation. She has a great Ready Start program. So we're super excited, because she has a nonprofit called Purpose Hands, and we are going to have a charity dinner and event called the Great Discovery Playoff here at City Hall, Tuesday, May the 20th, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I'm super excited, because with this nonprofit, we're going to help families with food, free diapers, clothing, formula wipes, and free childcare vouchers. I just found out that a lot of kids die from infections from not having wipes. I didn't even know that. So this is super serious. With Westland being a compassionate city, we want to partner with the city and other organizations and nonprofits. We're going to make this a big, exciting event just for the whole community. We reached out to the governor's office. We reached out to the congresspeople. I have a super huge network, so we're super excited. The labor unions. And we just want to reach out to all the nonprofits as a huge Westland community event, to really support our families and the communities. We have people losing jobs. Just me, recently, I had two car accidents. I was making $75,000. I have no money coming in. You know what I'm saying from, and that wasn't even my fault, being hidden state farm not paying, and just things like that. So it can happen to anybody. Your life can change in one day. But God blesses us to help other people. So I'm super excited. We're going to have Ms. Melissa Sampe. She's going to be one of our speakers. We're actually working on getting some Channel 4, 7, you know, really making it a big spotlight on Westland in a positive way. So we got that. And I'm excited to say I'm the president of the Wayne Westland Kiwanis Club, and we are having our meeting tomorrow at the Westland Library at 12 o'clock. We might change our time to maybe like later in the evening, because sometimes it's hard to get people to get there in the morning. And recently, we have a partnership with the Michigan Small Business Development Center in Wayne. We had two successful classes. The first class was creating your business. The second one was your LLC. We had over 30 people show up. I'm actually working with the Wayne, I mean, Westland Chamber, and I'm going to get with the library to have these free classes over for the city of Westland. And they help you start your businesses. They do business plans. They have free resources. They have mentors. The Wayne Westland Schools, we had our little annual uncorked, and it was a very fun event. We raised a lot of money for the teachers. And there's another organization, we just, I went to a suicide prevention course with the Wayne Westland Schools. And we work with Growth Works, and you've got to check out some of these statistics on suicide. It's really scary. So, you know, definitely if I can get you guys connected, you know, as a community thing, because there was a lot of seniors there saying commit suicide, and even with the younger kids with, you know, anxiety problems. So thank you for letting me come up. You know, I'm the flyer girl, so I have flyers for everyone. And if there's any type of events in the community, I'll let you guys know.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Trustee Hines, we appreciate that.
That was a lot.
You spoke rapidly. Is there anyone? Okay. Is there anyone on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Hi again. My name is Sandra Powers, and I'm the president of the Association of the Abbeys of Westland. The Abbeys of Westland, again to reiterate, we have 104 units there. We're a significant tax base for the city, probably $600,000 plus yearly. In the condominium association, however, we own our own roads. It's considered private, so we pay for the plowing and the maintenance of those roads, concrete replacement when needed. Also, there's been several sinkholes that have happened with the storm sewers there that we have had to fix ourselves, because the city says we own that problem. And so I would like to put it out here that we pay significant taxes and get very little for our community from that. And I would like it considered that the city take ownership of these roads, to take ownership of the plowing, to take ownership of the sewers and the storm maintenance and replacement and repairs necessary. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone on my left, public comment? Yes, Ryan. I'll get, we'll get you next, ma'am. Oh, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Everhard. I'm the president of the Westland Historical Society. Just have a couple of announcements. This coming Saturday, April 26th, is our annual spring cleaning. If anybody's available, we'll be working from 10 till 4. We do need volunteers. It'll be indoor and outdoor projects. If you have rakes, shovels, gloves, please bring them. We're still working on trying to get lunch for everybody that day. And our first dime to donate ever will be May 13th at Texas Roadhouse. It runs from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The flyer is available on our Facebook page. I do have a few here, and I'll, we'll have some at the museum if anybody wants to pick one up. You do have to present the flyer to, at the restaurant. And the way it works is 10% of the total food purchase, not no alcohol, is donated to the Westland Historical Society. And the money that is raised will go to help the Westland Historical Village. I'm going to, where can I leave these?
If you want to stay after, we can pass them around.
Okay.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on my right wishing to speak? Public comment. Anyone on my left? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Judith Yates, and I'm here on behalf of the Kissimmee Missionary Baptist Church of Westland Summer Youth Program. I've been before you many, many times, so I'm not going to bore you with the litany of all the things that we do. But I would just like to thank you for your support and ask you again to make an investment in our youth in Westland. I'd also like to tell you about our Neighborhood Wellness Clinic. We operate Tuesday and Thursday, 8 to 5, and Sundays at 9 to 1:30. They offer free testing, blood pressure, A1C, cholesterol, COVID testing, and we have a resource person available to help with any problems such as housing, food insufficiency. So I would invite you to come out and take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone on my right? Yes, ma'am.
Hello. It's me again. You know what? I just wanted to end this and, and say, and I'm going to piggyback on Judy, I appreciate all of you. Mayor, I appreciate you, and I know that you're all over the place, because I followed you a few times. And I appreciate what is being done currently. Now, you know, we understand that our Norwayne place didn't Now, you know, we understand that our Norwayne place didn't get this bad overnight and it's not gonna take, it's gonna take a lot more or a lot longer for it to be better. We understand that. We just want to see some kind semblance of some steps being made, progress being made, any type, anything is gonna be helpful. I am anxious to see this Grand Travis. Is that still in the making? I know I'm not supposed to ask you questions, so anyway, I'm happy, I would be elated to see that Grand Travis part because you remember when you were petitioning for mayor, you came through and you said it was a dip in the road? Well, that dip is down here now, you know? And what they keep doing is putting that filler in or whatever you call it, and it just makes it worse. Another area is when people come into our area, businesses come to our area when there's problems, say like when the main breaks. You know what they do? They leave, they dump dirt, a bunch of dirt. You can see dirt flying all over instead of replacing the cement. Or either they dump gravel. They don't do that in the other parts of the city. They don't do that. They do that in lower income areas. So anyway, I am just gonna say, I appreciate what's going on. I know everyone is busy, but we would love to see a piece of that pie. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas, appreciate it. Is there anyone on my left wishing to speak? Mr. Warren.
Okay, going back to item D. In February, when that $10,000 was removed from the Gassimony Church, it was, the rationale was given that they could not use ARPA funds and community development funds at the same time. But yet, the director comes back in here tonight and proposes to do the same thing in Norwayne. We're gonna use community development funds in public parks and Norwayne has got an ARPA fund. And you guys kind of entertained it. So I need to know, what is the difference between the two communities? What is the difference? Why would you entertain that setup and postpone? You wouldn't postpone it for me, so you can hear the other side. You wouldn't postpone it? Only Sampi was opposed to. You guys just ran and just pushed me out in the community right out of the way. But yet, you will sit here and talk about those rocks pretty much all the time and what is the difference between the two communities receiving ARPA funds and now she's proposing the community development funds for the park? You didn't give Gassimony a chance to even make a decision of what they should do with the funds in relation to the community. But yet, you want to go into a study session to help them out. I want to be included in that study session with Gassimony so we can figure out what we can do with some money and some of your ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else on my right wishing to speak? Yes, Ray.
Hello, everybody. Well, it's been a long meeting, just taking notes and listening and wow, very interesting. So, anyway, I want to talk about for a minute here, the DD Council, I'm telling you, Medicaid is the biggest thing, it affects a lot of people. And when I'm coming back from the DD Council, I got work to do and kind of telling people to, you know, write their legislatures and hey, coffee hour times, and I'm gonna kind of contact either Pete or somebody, but I like to go to that too. And that is my mission. And I liked the governor's message that yesterday, I think, or Saturday, when I was watching her, I support her big time. She said Medicaid is not for sale, which is not for sale. It's people's lives we're missing with. It's a big health industry, doctors and stuff. So, anyway, this sheet right here is the flyer. I was at this event last year, Mayor Kevin's gonna be there, Melissa, and I'm planning on being there for that support of that walk. And anyways, April 26, 2025, 4:00 PM to 6:00, at the Tarter Park Pavilion, so it's gonna be fun. I come with big support. All Walk Sublife come to this event and I think it's a great way to support people. Anyway, there is another thing going on, Lunch and Learn, I just saw here too. I was planning maybe going to that. You can always learn on different things there. And Ray is spreading out to Dearborn. I'm planning to meet that Dearborn mayor and spreading my word of hope, where the people with disabilities, people are everywhere. So, just wanted to pass that on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Wilson.
Okay, so I, this is the last thing I'm gonna say about this money thing. $112,000 is sitting out there. There's no place for it to go. We've got a place for it to go. This is not a battle between Carver Sub, which is a target area for the government, or Norwayne, which is a target area for the government. All the money should not be going to Norwayne. I don't care what you say, how you figure it out, it's not fair. We have parks, we have two parks. We have been fighting for damn near 35 years to get something done on the South End. And it's just, it's just now coming. We got a playscape about this big. Norwayne got one this big. Come on, we got kids down in our neighborhood too. Number two, that, we can split that money, it's cool with me. But number two, since we got all this excess money, mayor, thank you Kevin, can we get some speed humps? Because now they've got construction on Merriman, they've got building and construction on Van Born that is down to three lanes and a turning lane. And we have cars coming through up Henry Rough, down Henry Rough, cutting through Annapolis Park using Julius, or they're coming up through Fairfield Glades. They are speeding, unfortunately. I feel bad for that woman that was here talking about how fast they're going down our street, but she needs to live down there on my end, okay? Because we don't, and I'm gonna say this again, we don't get police protection like you do up here on this end. I seen them, they come, they come down Merriman to Van Born, back up Middlebelt, and they heading straight north. They don't come through Annapolis Park. I've seen two since the last time I was here, and that was almost a month ago, because I can only come once a month. Two police cars. Got to do better, take care of us down on that end too, please. Because somebody's gonna get hurt. Now, like I said, if it's one of my grandkids, y'all got to suit.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on public comment? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on public comment? With that, we will close public comment and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor.
Thank you, council president. Thank you, city council. Thank you, everybody in attendance tonight and for all the people who spoke about the issues that you're concerned with. I'll explain the Garden City Police jersey at the end of my comments, there's a reason. But I do want to speak about the issues that came up at this meeting tonight. So, Ms. Wilson, thank you, we'll get you the speed humps, they're coming in soon. I'm looking at my deputy mayor, he will make sure that our speed humps are installed soon. They wait till the weather warms, which is right now, so you'll be seeing those installed very soon. We're putting, we're putting a few more in this year. Ms. Thomas, I know she just stepped out from Norwayne, she asked about Grand Travers. Yes, Grand Travers will be repaved this year. Yes, I did comment to her about a year and a half ago when I was running for mayor about how bad the road was and that I would do what I could to get it repaved. I know it took a while, things in government sometimes take a while. Grand Travers will be repaved this year. And then, Mr. Warren, I wanted to thank you for your suggestion. You made the case to me after the last meeting that the CDBG matching fund requirement should be lifted. I've directed my community development director, Joanne, to take that out of our proposed budget and we'll be asking city council to include that, lifting the matching fund requirement. That way, organizations like Gassimony who have programs that are gonna be funded, they don't have to take that out of their own pocket, they can use the funds as they see fit to serve our community. Also, I know you mentioned a study session for, for budget study sessions, I would encourage everybody to attend these. We did our last one a couple of weeks ago, our next one is, it's on my list here. Yeah, Saturday the 26th, from 9:00 to noon. But I know city council is willing to hear everybody out. Ultimately, the budget is their, their authority and their document. The mayor proposes it, they approve it, we negotiate that. So I want to encourage everybody to make their voice heard on behalf of their, their part of Westland. Every part of Westland is important to us. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I want to make sure that the things that you think should be prioritized are included. And I know, I would assume the city council feels the same way. Couple things, I know we talked about investments in Norwayne. We're asking city council to approve two additional ordinance officers. So blight has been an issue. I see it every day, I see it right around here, I see it where I live, I see it on the South End, I see it everywhere. It's something we gotta make a lot of progress on and it's something I feel strongly about. So I'm hoping city council will, and I talked to a couple of the members already that support it, so we need to put these ordinance officers to work, get our city cleaned up in that way, so I feel very strongly about that as well. On another topic, I hope everybody had a nice Easter and a nice holiday weekend. Last month, we began a new initiative to boost traffic to the businesses, businesses affected by the Wayne Road Bridge closure. Last week, we held our second restaurant rally. We're gonna be doing these every few weeks or so to support our businesses right here on North Wayne Road, north of Central City where this bridge is closed. The Wayne County Construction is, is probably gonna have that closed until much later in the year. They're thinking maybe November or December, so it's really hurting these businesses and we want to ask the communities to support them. I also want to thank the folks who came to our last mayor's listening tour, that was the other day at legendary acts at Hush. I want to thank Cody Bailey for being a great host and for his team. And then, of course, to all the residents who turned out to talk to us directly. We take a lot of notes and we make sure that we follow up with residents to make sure their concerns are addressed. Tomorrow is Earth Day and we're gonna be joining Hayes Elementary for their Earth Day celebration. That's off of Ann Arbor Trail and it's, the event is planned at 12:30. Thursday, April 24th, at 11:15 AM, we'll have our lunchtime conversation to honor Arab American Heritage Month. Our special guest speaker is Deputy Wayne County Executive Assad Turfi. Another event coming up this Friday, the Westland Police and John Glenn High School 2025 Flag Football Tournament will be held Friday, April 25th, at 6:30 PM at John Glenn High School Football Field. The next one, I'm gonna let Councilwoman Sampi cover this, but I will mention it. Shine a Light Autism Awareness Community Day is coming up, April, Saturday, April 26th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at Central City Park. But I really want to let her cover this one because, because we, because she's really spearheaded this event, so I really appreciate all your hard work on it. And I think we'll have participation from the whole city to raise autism awareness and bring people together. WYAA is hosting their opening day at JC Park on May 3rd with a team parade starting at noon. We're partnering again with the U.S. Conference of Mayors and their Play Ball Initiative. Play Ball Initiative focuses on the sport of baseball and encourages sustained participation in sports. The purpose is to reach kids who don't normally play sports and baseball and strengthen the connection with those who are currently involved in the game. WYAA currently has over 200 kids participating in this season's league. May 3rd opening day will be a community event with all the teams of the WYAA coming out to start the season together and play ball. The Westland Police and Fire Departments will be hosting a Free Kids Safety Day on May, Saturday, May 3rd, from 2:00 to 5:00 PM at Central City Park. Activities include fire safety education, gun safety, child fingerprint kits, CPR, first aid, and much more. There will be snacks and fun for kids as well as a great educational information for parents. I'd also like to wish all our administrative professionals a Happy Administrative Professionals' Day, Wednesday, April 23rd. And I thank all of them for their hard work. I'd also like to thank former city clerk Eileen DeHart for continuing to serve on the zoning board of appeals and thank you, city council, for her reappointment. Now, I'll get to why I'm wearing the jersey. So, last month, in March, Westland firefighters and Garden City Police faced off for a charity hockey game. It's something that's been going on for many years now. I see Chief Stamper shaking his head because he's a little disappointed that the firefighters from Westland didn't win. Yeah, and we're all a little disappointed. And what the, what the, what the mayors do is we do a wager, whichever team loses, that losing city's mayor wears the jersey at the city council meeting. So I'm wearing the Garden City jersey tonight. I want to congratulate Garden City Mayor Jacobs and the Garden City Police Department. But the money goes to a great cause, the firefighters charity on our end and then also on the Garden City end, the police over there have a charity fund. So, thank you to our police and firefighters for raising money and for doing all their great work in the community. And that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Anything from the city attorney's office this evening?
It's good to be with you all. Happy Easter season to everybody and I have no other comments today, I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Grisco. We will now start council comments this evening with comments from Councilwoman Bowman.
You miss one meeting and then you come back and you gotta talk first. So I also want to repeat thank you for everyone that came tonight, all in attendance and spoke. It's one of the things I've asked on several times, I'm like, please come to the meetings, please share what you're, you know, talk about the agenda, talk about the things that are affecting you and your, and your community so, you know, we can actually get that. So I do encourage that always and I'm very glad we did that. I do, I'm going, I'm going to answer Mr. Warren's ask about the $10,000. I will, my understanding, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and I, we can, happy to do that, but my understanding of that was that we had approved $25,000 for Gassimony and that the $10,000 that was originally put into CDBG was not going to be added to it. It was basically, we approved $25,000. The original $10,000 was what was approved, then we agreed to $25,000, but not $35,000, so it was reallocated, the $10,000. So that's my understanding. If I'm wrong, I am happy to be wrong and I, we can talk about it more, but that was my understanding about that, so I just want to clear that up because that was, that was why I voted the way I did, was because I can go back to the meetings and see that, because it was also one of my concerns, that we were not doing 35, we were only going with the original request of $25,000. So, that being said, one of the things that I know that I've been thinking a lot about with the number of things going on and what really threw me for today was a lot of the funding conversations. The council has had conversations about going slower even with spending the remaining ARPA dollars, and I know that there's some really important things being asked to do, like sidewalks and things like that, but at the same time, we know the residents are asking for a pool, the residents are asking for other things. And so I guess, I just, I'm hoping that we can just figure out a way with the, with the budget sessions, with all these things, that we can actually do the things that our residents are asking for, so we can actually, you know, especially the pool. I think every single person on this council has mentioned the pool, but then if we just keep spending the dollars as what, and, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, we're not gonna be able to do something big like a pool for our community and I think that's an important thing, or the rec center and things like that. So I'm just hoping that that can be part of the more deeper conversations when we're talking about how we're spending our money, because that did, that is something that's concerning me that I'm thinking about a lot, is, you know, are we, are we properly allocating this money, the money and with the funding sources? With that, I also want to mention that today I got my email that said Inspire Theater is selling tickets for The Curious Savage, which is their next performance coming up in June. And it's, I've actually read through the script. I will, I will say that I tried to get a part, I did not get a part, but I will indicate that I did, I did go to the auditions, which was a lot of fun. And so I have read through this script and it is a really, really fun show. So if you've not been to the Inspire Theater, I encourage you to get your tickets soon. I imagine this is gonna sell out, so, but it is a really, really neat show. So The Curious Savage at Inspire Theater. So The Curious Savage at Inspire Theater. And with that, I will actually close my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowman. We will now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. The first thing I want to start off with is saying happy birthday to my best friend, my little dude, my son, who turns three Wednesday. So I want to make sure he knows I love him and happy birthday. Another thing I want to bring up is Tony Perry. I want to give him another shout out, man. That's huge to come into a room where you have community saying that, hey, I want my community to look good, I want my community to have this, and you come here and stand and say, hey, I was part of the problem, but I'm here to be part of the solution. So I want to give him one more shout out because that's, that's huge. It takes a lot to do that. Next shout I want to give to a new city attraction, the Wicked Pickleball. Most people know I'm a fan of pickleball and we have a new place here that's 10 minutes away. So now I don't have to drive an hour to Ann Arbor to sneak away to play pickleball. I can go here across the street from City Hall. It's at 36871 Warm Road. So please check it out. They have free pickleball going on right now till the end of the month. Also, April 26th, this Saturday is going to be a busy, busy day. I'm not going to take your thunder, so. But we got a study session coming, but also at the K9 Corral Park, they having to clean up to help, clean up that park. So if you can volunteer to come out to help our furry love, furry animals have a safe and clean place to play, please come out this Saturday from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Also, I want to jump on the Happy Easter bandwagon, but this one was very special to me. Last month, the school around the corner from me reached out to me and said, hey, we're trying to get Easter baskets for our young kids. Can you help and donate a couple baskets? We already had a church that's going to donate, I think it was 20 baskets at the time. So I reached out to my team and they said, yeah, we think we can donate 100 baskets. And I asked my team, well, find out how much each of those baskets costs. And they came back and said it's about $5.80. So I figured, okay, it's going to cost about three, well, how many kids is going to, how many kids are at this school? It's 400 kids. Well, it's going to cost about three grand. So I told my team, let's find a way to make it happen. It should not be, not one kid at that school did not have an Easter basket. So I'd like to report, we were able to raise money, get donations to give 450 kids an Easter basket. And this is very touching because some of those kids never had an Easter basket. And, you know, just to think about my life when I woke up in the morning and seen an Easter basket and these kids never had one. So it's very great that all the people came out and donated and brought stuff for these kids. And I would like to shout out a couple of people that did help. Principal Ms. Michaels and her team for actually reaching out, giving me the opportunity to, to be able to touch and provide a smile to all these kids. John and Paula, every day, it was a package on my porch.
Exactly.
Yep. Every day for something to give to the kids. Michael Crone, he donated 400 Beanie Babies and all different type of Beanie Babies. My kids, when they see it, they're like, oh daddy, we love you. This is for us. No, sorry. It's for, for the other kids and my daughters, I'm very proud of them. And all they can say every time is like, Daddy, you're doing a great job for these kids. And that's big from an eight and nine-year-old. City Council for also donating to help me get candy and gifts for the kids. Another one that shocked me, that was very surprising, especially this is their busy time of the year, Easter, Russell Stoffers donated 418 chocolate bunnies. And that was very surprising to see in your inbox a company reach out to you and you say, oh, this is definitely a scam. But they said, if you come pick it up, we'll donate it. So my team drove all the way to Dundee, picked up 418 chocolate bunnies. And the moral of the story is, we were able to give 418 Easter baskets to Hamilton Elementary. We had so much candy, we went around to Emmanuel Stewart's Champion of Tomorrow Kids and also donated to another 20 to 30 kids. So I want to share that information with you guys. If you want to see videos, want to see kids smiling, want to see, oh, sorry, one that stole the show was actually the Easter bunny was there as well. Go to Councilman Delano Hornbuckle, there's videos, there's pictures of all the kids and how excited they was for Easter. And, you know, just remind me how important it is to make sure that kids are happy, they have a safe place, and they don't have to worry about the stress in the world and just be kids for a day. So thank you, that's all, and I appreciate, oh, wait a minute, one more thing, I'm sorry. Can't forget about the Abbys. I want to thank the Abbys for allowing me to participate in your meetings, hear you out, be a part of this journey. You definitely worked really hard and I hope this turned out the way we wanted to, but definitely continue to love your community. That's very important. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of that journey. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Hornbuckle. We will now hear from Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President, or Council Hornbuckle. I'll just say it's not a competition so you can speak longer than the pro tem and the council president. Okay? No, good stuff, good stuff, man. Really good stuff. Thank you. Be brief today. I think the one thing that's glaring as I woke up this morning and turned on the TV, you know, the passing of the Pope, it's something that I think no matter who you were, Catholic, Christian, Protestant, Jew, Gentile, believer or not, this man was probably the best Pope that I could ever have and seen in my life and how he was not only a defender of the faith, but also a progressive and made sure that he was inclusive for everyone, had a lot of the qualities and ideals I think that any human being should have. Former President Barack Obama said it the best. He said, this is the man who wanted you to be a better person and made you feel like you wanted to be one as well. I pray for the Catholic Church. I pray for the world. I pray that the College of Cardinals will come together and find another good Pope to continue to provide us with just as good a leadership as Pope Francis did. So I'll keep him in my heart and I hope you all do the same. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Hart. We will now hear from Councilwoman Rukowski.
Thank you, Council President. I think I've shared enough of my opine today and my opinions. Thank you for recognizing the passing of the Pope and I hope those that celebrated Easter, Passover, or Orthodox Easter had a peaceful moment to honor the resurrection. And other than that, just thank you for the discourse and debate and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. I'll keep it short, sweet. It is really hot here and I hope to see everyone here this Saturday for a study session.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. All right, Pro Tem Sampe.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for, for attending today. Obviously, we had a longer meeting than normal, but it all comes down to the feedback. It comes down to the information that you share, so I truly appreciate it. In terms of our budget study, study session, you heard that we're having one on Saturday from nine to noon. We have another packed agenda and I'll talk in a few minutes about other things going on. I just want to say how amazing of a human you are, Councilman, because I, I know that this was a last-minute thing for the Easter baskets, but the community is really lucky because anytime there's a call, you're the first one to raise your hand. So thank you. Thank you for just being such a kind human. I really appreciate it. I know the community does too. So I felt, I was, been ill for the past week, but I've been following just like the assembly process and the community is just lucky to have you. So I just wanted to thank you again. I also wanted to thank Mr. Warren who brought this up, I know Ms. Wilson. This is, this is something we talk about with the block grants on a, on a regular basis. Are we fair and equitable? Are we looking at having the funds spread out the right way? So, you know, I, I took a step back. Mr. Warren challenged me, he's like, you need to look at this. And I said, you know what, Mr. Warren, you're right. Like sometimes we're very reactionary. We just vote to vote. So I, I'm really trying to listen, take a step back, slow things down, ask a lot of questions. We already know I talk a lot, but the thing is, is we have to, as a body, we have to just be a little bit more careful and we have to make sure that we're doing things the right way. So thank you for keeping us on our toes. Thank you, everyone, for asking these questions, figuring out, are we doing this the right way? Are we spending the money equitably? Are we looking at, you know, areas that should get funded and other areas that shouldn't? So, you know, I think the conversation's continuing and it needs to continue. Before I talk about, one of the main things I wanted to talk about today, I, and I wasn't going to bring this up today, but this is, this is too near and dear to my heart. I want to say I am sorry to the autistic community. There's been a lot of rhetoric, a lot of negative information about autism ruining families. Autism did the opposite for my family, okay? It turned me into a fighter. It turned me into an advocate. It turned me into a compassionate person. I am a better person for having a brother with low-functioning autism. And you know what? The families that have an individual with autism, I know you feel the same way too. I know you do. I've talked to you. I've had individuals reach out to me to say, this is a, this is an individual tragedy. No, it is not. Kids that never pay taxes, can't hold a job, can't play baseball, can't write a poem. Bull crap. You know what? They're individuals. It's not okay. It's dehumanizing. It's false. And I'll tell you right now, what autism does with families, it does not ruin them, it makes them better people, okay? Ableism does. That's what ruins families. Autistic people do not need to be fixed. They do not, okay? They're not tragedies, they're not burdens, they are individuals with hearts, with value, with integrity. So what, they can't play sports? Some, most can, but so what if they can't? You know what? If you have someone in your family that has autism, okay, they're not broken, you're not broken, they're not a mistake, you're not a mistake, and they're worthy of love. And I'm telling you right now, my biggest fear in all of this rhetoric right now is staying silent, is not saying anything. That right there is the tragedy of being silent, keep on scrolling by, saying, oh, he's crazy, I'm going to move on with my day. And that's what becomes the normal. And I'm telling you right now, you who know me and individuals that, yes, I have a lot to say, but I'm speaking up for the families, for someone I love with autism, because I understand and the stigma, autism is not a disease, okay? I can tell you right now, by September, we are not eliminating autism. Autism is not a cure. It does not need to be cured. Right now, what we need is we need the legal protections for disability rights. We need sensory-friendly environments, like the one we're doing on Saturday with, you know, what the mayor had mentioned, respectful and affirming care. And what the world needs now is for us to just be abrasive and loving and understanding. And that's all I want to say about that. So I'm going to go on to something more positive. Autism Acceptance Day is something that I had a vision for last year. The mayor and I did a walk, a very simple walk, and I came to him this year and said, I'm going to do a bigger and better event. He's like, go for it. We put together the most amazing team of people, from speech therapists to our police and fire, to individuals that understand the autism community. And it is going to be an amazing day on Saturday. We are going to have the police dogs out there, the firefighters, the bounce houses, face painting, DJ, a sensory area where if they just need a little quiet and just to have crafts and just quiet music and drawing, they got that too. There's going to be free food for every single person that attends. So we've secured a lot of amazing sponsorship dollars to make this happen. So I want to just thank the amazing group of people that are working on this. I want to thank you to our presenting sponsors, Solely Construction, our activity sponsors, Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib and Hagir Health, our event sponsors, STEP, the firefighters, Councilman Hornbuckle, Don Nicholson Enterprises, the Westland Police Partnership, Living and Learning Enrichment Center, Public Service Credit Union, Festive Flamingo, Communication is Key, and Super Sweet Speech. I cannot wait to see you all on Saturday for an amazing event. And I'm telling you, everyone's welcome. Please bring out your family. Please bring out the kids that maybe fall apart in public because on Saturday, it doesn't matter. Everyone's entitled to come and be their self and just feel accepted and don't feel embarrassed. And you know what? If kids are coming up and screaming and crying and having meltdowns, that's okay. We want to see them. We want to see everyone out there. So please, come on Saturday. It's totally free, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. The mayor has talked about Kids Safety Day, so I won't belabor that, but that's another great event for children in our community on May 3rd, on Saturday. And I know it's been brought up by Ms. Heinz, but amazing, amazing, amazing woman in our community, Ms. Robinson, is doing a great event, Kids Purpose Learning Center. She has a nonprofit, Purpose Hands nonprofit, and this charity is absolutely amazing. They give diapers, they, food, clothing, wipes, childcare assistance. Wayne County Commissioner Chair Alicia Bell is going to be there. I'll be there. They're going to have a lot of great speakers and prizes. So more information to come, but May 20th here at Westland City Hall is, is this event. And you know what? She's doing it for the right reasons. She's doing it to give back to her community and doing it to help out families right now that are struggling. And if you don't know a family that's struggling, feel blessed, but I know there's a lot of people right now that needs help. So with that being said, I hope everyone had a great Easter, Passover, great weekend, whatever you celebrated. We'll see you at our next meeting. If you need to get in touch with me, my personal council page, Councilwoman Melissa Sampe. Until then, be safe and kind with one another, with one another, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you, Pro Tem Sampe. I would like to start out by thanking Councilman Hornbuckle for the work that he put in. I saw lots of packages. I live, for those of you who don't know, about six doors down from him. It seemed like every day a new package was on his door with people dropping stuff off to help. So the kids at Hamilton Elementary really had a better, brighter Easter because of the work that Councilman Hornbuckle did in organizing this event to get Easter baskets for what started out as a handful of kids, like he mentioned, 20 kids, to over 400 kids. So thank you, not only to you, but your entire team that put a lot of work and effort into making this happen and supporting the kids at Hamilton Elementary. Really a job well done. I want to thank my colleague, Pro Tem Sampe, and also the mayor for their autism awareness event that they're putting together. As she mentioned, it is going to be bigger and better this year. So I would encourage everybody, after you come to our budget study session this Saturday morning from 9:00 a.m. to noon, come on out to the autism awareness event over at Tatton Park. It is going to be truly a large and tremendous event to raise awareness for those in our community who are on the spectrum and who are autistic. And I want to thank you also for speaking out against some of the really vile and inhumane comments that are made towards not only autistic people, but their families as well who take care of and live with those on the spectrum. So thank you for your courage to speak out on that. My colleague already mentioned the comment about the Pope passing as well. Pope Francis truly did, I think, live in the fullest extent what it meant to be a Christian, right? When you think about scripture and it tells you in Matthew, when you give a banquet, invite the poor, the blind, the crippled, and the lame, although you will not be repaid now, you will be repaid later in the resurrection of the righteous. When you talk about Proverbs, he who lends himself to the Lord lends himself to the poor. I think more than any Pope that came before him, Pope Francis truly, truly lived out a life that any individual, Christian or otherwise, should be proud of, and a life of service to the less fortunate, to the poor, to the homeless, to the sick. And so it is a tragic passing for all the world, not just Catholics, of Pope Francis' passing. I did want to reiterate, as Ryan brought up, that the Westland Historical Society is going to be having their Dying to Donate event over at Texas Roadhouse. Again, that event is supporting the Westland Historical Society and it is taking place on May 13th, right here at the Texas Roadhouse in Westland, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. and 10% of the food donations will be going towards the Westland Historical Society. So please join us in supporting a great organization here in our community as they help to preserve the history of Westland. Just a couple of other things. My colleague, Councilwoman Bowman, did mention the pool discussion and absolutely discussion, and absolutely right, we have all sat up here and talked about wanting to bring a pool back. There is more discussion that I think we can have on that this very weekend, because our Parks and Recreation discussion is coming up, their presentation for Parks and Rec is coming up this very Saturday at the budget study session, so I look forward to that being a topic of conversation, and thank you for bringing that issue up, appreciate it. And with that, I think that's all I'm gonna really talk about here. A lot of the stuff was already brought up, so I'm not gonna belabor that. If you need anything from me, feel free to give me a call at 734-890-2146, you can also text me, that is my personal cellphone number, and you can find me on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?